All right, it is now 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to call the June 16th, 2022 Board of Adjustment meeting to order. Ms. Elliott, would you please call the roll?
Um, will we work with?
Present.
Present.
Carol Bell. Kathy Montes.
Present.
Paul DuKang.
Present.
Sam Miller.
Present.
Okay, so it appears that we do have a quorum. So four regular members and one alternate member. So before we go into a little further into this, I wanted to just kind of make sure that we are all on the same page in terms of the voting, since we have two different kinds of hearings tonight. I know the math gets a little squirrely on one of them, especially when we have a member absent. So Ms. Wombley, can you explain to us how we're going to do this? I know the appeal is a simple majority.
That's right. The appeal is simple majority and the variance is four fifths.
Right, so is that four fifths of the members here? And do we have to account the member who's absent?
No, so their absence, you have the alternate who is taking the place.
Okay, okay, so it'll just be straight four fifths today.
Straight four fifths.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Yep.
All right, on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda for the March 10th, 2022 hearing? All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes proposed? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented or amended?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak tonight and you haven't already signed up, I have three folks signed up to speak so far. Please let us know, sign in if you have not already done so. At this time, I'd like to ask for disqualifications. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming to the board tonight? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the particular matter involved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention I don't have a conflict or a perceived conflict, but I'd like it to be known that I have dined at the Frog Island Seafood Restaurant many times over my life.
I think we all have.
I just want to know, I don't believe that that delicious food there is going to cause me to change my voting habits. I can still make impartial decisions based on that.
Okay, duly noted, I think I'm in full agreement with you there. I think we all are.
A shrimp heat is pretty powerful though.
Yeah. All right, at this time, we'd like to swear in the participants, including the staff for both cases tonight. If you would all stand up and come to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Bill Brosie and I'm here on the second agenda item. I'm going to move to continue that to the July 14th, whenever the appropriate time be heard on that request of continuation, it'll be heard.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Is that the Frog Island?
That's the Frog Island, right.
Does the county, do you have an objection to continuing that?
I don't know the reason for the continuance. I don't suspect I'll have an objection, but...
To obtain some more evidence.
I'm not, the county doesn't object.
Okay.
So we can go ahead and address that so we don't hold him hostage.
Okay, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
So July 14th is the next question? Okay. All right?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you raise your right hand, push your left hand on the Bible. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, thank you, you may be seated. All right, at this time, we will hear the, well, the only case tonight. This is the case BOA 22-01, Misty Young Appeal. It is an appeal for a notice of violation dated March 2nd, 2022, for operating an automobile rentals business on residential property located at 1086 Hampton Street, Corolla, Tax Map 115B, Parcel 563, Poplar Branch Beach Township. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask the staff to present their case.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the county will call Jenny Turner.
All right, Ms. Turner?
Are you Misty Young?
Hi.
Okay, if you, you can come on up here to the table so you can hear, and then we want to make sure we get you on the microphone pretty good.
Please state your name and how you're employed.
My name is Jenny Turner, I'm a senior planner with the county.
And how long have you been employed in that position, Ms. Turner?
On August 9th or 10th of this year, it'll be 13 years.
And what are your duties and responsibilities in that position?
My duties are to enforce the Unified Development Ordinance, assist the community and citizens with questions regarding the ordinance process, zoning applications, special use permits, assist with code enforcement as needed, generally just planning items, site plan review, rezonings, text amendments, land use plan amendments. I'm involved in all those aspects of planning with the county's planning department, currently called the Development Services Department.
In the course of your employment, are you familiar with the matter before the board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how are you familiar with the matter?
I assisted our code enforcement officer, Anna Cherry, in organizing and responding to a complaint regarding an alleged violation, and assisted with understanding of the ordinance as it relates to that violation.
And what was the nature of the violation and its location?
The nature of the violation was automobile rentals, and the location was 1086 Hampton Street in Corolla, in the Corolla Light Development.
Okay, to your knowledge, what is the zoning district in which the property at 1086 Hampton Street in Corolla is located?
So the property is zoned, single-family residential Outer Banks, and the property does have a plan unit development or PUD overlay zoning district, which means that it's subject to a master plan for the Corolla Light Plan Unit Development. So the uses and the designation of the property is indicated on that master plan, and in this case, this property is designated as residential. That plan lays out open space, commercial designated properties, as well as residential properties, and this particular property is designated as residential.
And does the county's Unified Development Ordinance establish uses permitted in that particular zoning district?
Yes, sir, it does. These plan unit developments are actually what we might term like a legacy zoning district, where you can't come in and request that type of zoning now. So there are some provisions in Chapter 1 of our ordinance regarding transitional provisions for those existing plan unit developments. And in those provisions, it lays out allowable uses, and it indicates that land designated for residential development, which this property is, is limited to the allowable uses for the SFO district listed in the summer use table, which is found in Chapter 4. You may be familiar with that. And also, it specifically states that airports, major utilities, wind energy facilities, outdoor recreation/entertainment uses, and vehicle sales and services require approval of a special use permit. If we turn over to that summer use table, you can see that the automobile sales and rental is classified kind of as the same use together in that use table, and if we look at the SFO designation in this table, we can see that's a blank cell indicating that the use is prohibited in that zoning district.
What is the way in which the Unified Development Ordinance guides county staff to determine the use of property if it is not found to be a use in the table of permitted uses?
So if a use is not specifically termed as our ordinance classifies a use, or the terminology in the ordinance, there is some guidance in the ordinance in Chapter 10, definitions and measurement for how to try to define or classify that use into current use classifications and categories, and let me turn to that section. So generally, there's a section that's intended to provide a framework for categorizing land uses in a way that makes it easier to determine how a particular land use activity is to be considered in applying the use table and other provisions of the ordinance. And this particular section is intended to provide support in identifying instances where a new or an anticipated land use not identified in the use table is of such a nature, function, or duration that the impact of allowing it in a zoning district is so similar to that of a use type already identified in the use table as allowed in the zoning district, that allowing the new or anticipated land use should be interpreted as being consistent with the intent of the zoning district and the use regulations. And that was from Chapter 10, Section 10.4.1A of the ordinance. There's more guidance here for staff. Generally, it also lays out in this section characteristics of different uses. So in determining whether a use fits into a use category, we would think about the characteristics of the use, the characteristics of the classification, and examples of that use, and compare a proposed use with the uses that are allowed in the zoning ordinance. There's also standards laid out specifically for interpreting unlisted uses as permitted uses, and also for unlisted uses as not permitted. And basically, there's some guidelines for determining whether there's a similar use type already existing in the ordinance. So you basically, you try to determine whether there's already a use in the ordinance that allow, that is similar enough that you can apply those standards to the proposed use.
And are you aware that the applicant in this matter alleges that use of the property is car sharing?
I am, in that I've read the appeal forms where that car sharing term is used. And in researching the use of the property and the violation, we relied on the website that was being used, if you may be familiar in your pack, at the Turo website, where it basically states that it's a rental of a vehicle in a different way.
And so is car sharing a use that is provided for within the Unified Development Ordinance?
Using the interpreting unlisted uses, or it would be most similar to the automobile sales and rentals use.
And so utilizing the methodology provided for in the Unified Development Ordinance that you just spoke about, is it correct that the county, that the staff then determined car sharing to be most closely related to automobile sales, or in this case rentals?
That is correct, yes.
Good. And then as you testified, is automobile sales or rentals permitted in the zoning district in which the applicant's property is located?
No, it is not.
Okay. Now, does the Unified Development Ordinance then also provide any guidance to staff on how to determine the definition or meaning of a word if that word is not defined within the Unified Development Ordinance?
Yes, it does. In that same Chapter 10, there's guidance in the ordinance on 10.1.12, term not defined. If a term used in this ordinance is not defined in this chapter, the director shall have the authority to provide a definition through the interpretation procedure based upon definitions used in accepted sources, including but not limited to Planner's Dictionary, Glossary of Zoning and Development and Planning Terms, and a survey of zoning definitions published by the APA. So that's, those are the sources that we go to initially, and then if we need additional, if we can't find definitions there, we will go to the Webster's Dictionary.
And so the definition of automobile sales or rentals, I guess automobile sales and rentals is defined in Unified Development Ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Is that correct?
It is.
And what is that definition?
It's on the screen, it's premises on which new or used passenger automobiles, trailers, recreational vehicles, or light trucks in operating condition are displayed for sale, lease, or rental.
Now, is the term rental or rent defined in the Unified Development Ordinance?
No, it is not.
And so then, would you, or staff, utilize the methodology that you just explained in making a determination as to what the definition of rent or rental is?
We would.
Okay.
In that case, we, it's not found in the three cited dictionaries that are more specific to planning uses, and so we would have to go to the Webster's Dictionary.
Okay, and did staff do so?
We did.
And what did you determine the definition of rent or rental to be?
Well, there's, there are several definitions, but in this instance, items that might be related are the amount paid by a hire of personal property to the owner for the use thereof for rent, available for use or service in return for payment, and then rent as a verb. Those were, there's some additional definitions, rent to grant the possession and enjoyment of in exchange for rent, or to take and hold under an agreement to pay rent. To obtain the possession and use of a place or article in exchange for rent, to allow the possession and use of property in exchange for rent.
And does Unified Development Ordinance define car sharing?
No, sir.
And so then, does staff utilize the methodology that you explained to determine what the definition for car sharing is?
We did review the documents that were specifically called out, as well as the dictionary definition, and could not find a definition of car sharing.
So again, your testimony is that the use being made of the applicant's property is most closely related to and like automobile sales or rentals?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we, it seems difficult to describe what's the activity taking place without that rental term, the exchange of money for the use of the property.
Now, the applicant also states in her petition that the county would not permit the appellant to rent or sell her personal vehicles from a commercial location. Is that a correct statement, that someone may not rent or sell personal vehicles from a commercial location?
That's not entirely correct. The ordinance does allow for automobile sales and rentals in the county, subject to the standards of the ordinance. In the general business zoning district, that does require a special use permit. In the light industrial zoning district, zoning permits required. And as I previously mentioned, regarding the subject property in that plan unit development, a special use permit is required, as well as having that general business or commercial designation over the property within the PUD master plan.
Okay, and none of those requirements have been met in this particular instance, have they?
No.
I don't have any further questions of this witness at this time, Mr. Chairman?
All right. So Ms. Young, would you have any questions for the county?
Well, of course. So I just want to say that if this is found unfavorable for us, we will be appealing this to a...
Hold on just a second, I'm sorry. I'm the attorney for the board, which is also means I'm kind of the traffic cop here, and I'm not trying to cut you off or be rude, but I'm trying to make sure we all flow with the procedure. So at this point, this is your opportunity to ask her questions about what she just testified to. You will get an opportunity to share anything you want to. So right now is your opportunity to ask her questions about her testimony, or anything about the notices or your case, and then later, after the county's done with their presentation, you'll have an opportunity to testify.
Excellent. Okay. So it was Jenny, that's her name?
Correct.
Yes, does Currituck County define, define commercial car rental in their ordinances? Can you go ahead and read that to us?
The specific term, commercial car rental?
Yes, what are the, what are the, what are the requirements to have a commercial car rental agency in Currituck County?
Well, they would be the same as automobile sales and rentals.
And that's regulated by the DMV, correct?
Our ordinance is, deals with zoning, so we're concerned with land use.
Okay, so if you have a car rental agency, what are the zoning requirements for them? What kind of zone do they have to be in?
Well, so it's not just the zone, there's zoning, and as well as either a special use permit or zoning permit, depending on what district it's in. In a plan unit development such as Corolla Light, a special use permit would be required for that use.
Okay. I think you're misunderstanding my question.
Hold on, let her finish. She gets a chance to finish her answer.
I was just going to say that in the LI zoning district, as mentioned earlier, it would be a zoning permit would be required for that use.
What does a car rental agency require to have to be, to get a permit in Currituck County to operate? What do they have to have? What is special to a car rental agency that separates somebody who owns privately owned vehicles that are registered to them?
Zoning doesn't necessarily regulate ownership, so we regulate use. So whether it's a business or an individual, the regulations are the same.
Are you reading from the ordinance? Do you have that?
I can't. If you, if you tell me the section you would like me to read, I'd be glad to...
I'd like you to read the ordinance that regulates car rental businesses in Currituck County.
So...
How many parking spaces they're required to have, the licenses they're required to have, and what kind of vehicles they're supposed to be, and the Department of Motor Vehicles requirements.
Okay, so let me turn to the vehicle sales and services, automobile sales and rentals section of the ordinance, which would be in Chapter 4, which is where the use standards are located, which include the summary use table, as well as specific standards for that particular use. And we can look and see if there, if that will answer your question. So I'm returning to Section 4.2.4.1.3, automotive sales or rentals. Uses primarily involving the sales or rental of automobiles, trucks, recreational vehicles, or travel trailers shall comply with the following standards. The use shall be located on a lot of at least 40,000 square feet in area and a minimum lot width of 125 feet. The use shall not have more than one vehicle display pad for every 100 feet of street frontage. The vehicle display pad may be elevated up to two feet above adjacent displays or grade level. Vehicle displays may not take place within required setbacks and shall include a type 8 perimeter landscaping buffer between the display area and the street. Vehicle display areas shall be surfaced with concrete, asphalt, or other permanent surfacing material other than crushed stone. No vehicles or other similar items shall be displayed on the top of a building. All lights and lighting shall be designed and arranged so no source of light is directly visible from any adjacent property. And light repair and service functions are permitted as an accessory use provided all repair-related activities take place within an enclosed building. Uses primarily involving the sales or rental of recreational vehicles or of travel trailers may include one off-site storage area. Off-site storage and display areas shall meet the following standards. I don't believe that is necessarily relevant to what we're discussing, unless you, unless you would like me to continue to read that section?
Please continue.
Okay. The area designated for off-site storage of recreational vehicles shall be no farther than 2,000 feet from the use it is intended to serve. No pedestrian way is required between the two areas if they are on different sides of a state-maintained highway, street, or right-of-way. The area designated for off-site storage of recreational vehicles which faces or is visible from any public right-of-way shall be screened with a type D buffer. Any area approved for the off-site storage of recreational vehicles shall provide sufficient access and turnaround space for emergency vehicles. Such access and turnaround areas must, at a minimum, be covered in gravel of sufficient depth and width to support a 75,000 pound fire apparatus.
So all those things you just described, does my property look like that? My residence look like that?
I, let me go back and look.
Do I have lights on my property? Do I have signs on my property?
I don't, I don't know if you have lights on your property.
I took about a dozen pictures on my property, so...
Ma'am, I didn't take any pictures on your property.
Well, the county did, so clearly, we must have evidence of what my property looks like. Does my car, does my property look like a car rental business?
Does it look like a car rental business?
Correct, does it look like a car rental business?
I'm not sure, I've not, I've not actually seen your property, I've only seen the pictures that were taken.
So you're here testifying against me, but you haven't seen my property. You haven't seen what you're testifying against.
I'm not testifying against anything.
Can we, can we, can we tone down the temperature a little bit here? I think we're all...
I'm pretty surprised that she's giving all this testimony, but she hasn't actually seen my property.
Well, she's, she has given us testimony on what the ordinance says for allowable uses in the zone where your house is, and that's really all she's said so far.
Okay, well, are you aware that the DMV requires car rental companies to have commercially like, commercially registered vehicles? Are you aware of that?
I'm aware that dealers' licenses are issued.
Do I have a dealer's license?
I do not know.
No, I do not. Do I have any commercially registered vehicles?
I do not know.
I do not. Are my vehicles privately registered? Do you know that?
I do not know. I believe your, your appeals said they were.
Yes, every one of my vehicles are privately registered. They're personally owned vehicles.
I object to the applicant testifying in the course of her cross-examination of the witness.
Yeah, that's, that's sustained. Please, you know, leave your questioning in the area of her testimony, what she testified to earlier, and the rest of your testimony that you want to present can be part of your presentation. Once the county's done, then you'll get an opportunity to get up and give your full presentation, and then we'll go from there. So do you have any further questions over...
Yes.
...her zoning?
So does Currituck County have any ordinance regulating peer-to-peer card, car sharing? Is there any ordinance about peer-to-peer car sharing?
Specifically related to peer-to-peer car sharing, there is not a specific ordinance that references peer-to-peer car sharing. There, as I have already testified, there is, it is a similar use to automobile sales and rentals, which there are ordinances about, laid out in our zoning ordinance.
So is an Uber driver a taxi driver in your broad definition of what a taxi driver is? If Currituck County would like to get specific.
Can you please, could you please let us know how that's relevant to this?
Yes, it's relevant because she's calling a peer-to-peer car ride-sharing business a car rental agency, when an Uber driver could be considered a taxi driver in Currituck County, if you're using those kind of broad definitions. Or an Airbnb can be considered a hotel, or a person doing food deliveries could be considered running a grocery store from their house. So how do you define an Uber driver in Currituck County?
I, maybe, I don't, I don't think the county regulates taxi drivers or issues any license for taxi drivers.
They do. Yes, they do. But they do not regulate Uber drivers, and they...
I'm not aware...
I'm not aware of a place in the zoning ordinance where the county regulates taxi drivers.
There is. There's an ordinance regarding taxi drivers.
Zoning ordinance?
Yes. Well-
Well, where, where is it?
I don't know. I would think you guys would know that because you guys are the county.
Well, which is why I said I'm not aware of it. So I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious.
There's, there's definitely a zoning ordinance for taxi drivers. I don't know specifically which one it is, but it's in there.
Okay. Um, well, I don't, I would ask a different question. The county, to my knowledge, the county doesn't regulate taxi drivers in zoning. I mean, there may be some other regulations somewhere, but in terms of zoning purposes and, um, for what we're here tonight, so in terms of the chair's question about the relevance of that, so-
Okay. So my question is, what county ordinance regulates peer-to-peer ride-sharing? I need to see that county ordinance.
I believe I answered that question already.
So you're saying there is no ordinance regulating peer-to-peer ride-sharing?
Mr. Chairman, asked, asked and answered.
Yes, I, I agree. I think that question has been answered and, um, the county has addressed that issue. And, and that is typically how the county addresses many issues that are not explicitly, uh, defined within the ordinance. Um, that is part of the planning department's job to make those determinations. And that's what we're all here discussing. So that's what their determination was. And based on the evidence that you provide to us during your presentation and the evidence the county provides, um, this board will make a determination whether they properly did that or not, made, made that connection between your business and the most closely related business in the Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay.
Anything further?
No further questions.
All right.
Nothing further from Ms. Turner.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
County calls Anna Cherry.
Okay, Ms. Chair.
Please state your name and how you're employed.
My name is Anna Cherry. I'm a code enforcement officer for the county.
And what are your duties and responsibilities as a county code enforcement officer?
So I field questions from the public about code enforcement complaints, such as zoning violations and code of ordinances. We then investigate the complaints and determine if there's a notice, a notice of violation that needs to be sent. Um, we compile the information and send the notice of violation. And then it is either appealed or maintained. And we then continue with civil citations in order to, um, come into compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance or the Code of Ordnances.
And in the course of your employment, have you become familiar with the use of property located at 1086 Hampton Street?
Yes, I have.
And how did you first become familiar with the use of that property?
So we got an email, um, from a staff member that was at the beach in Corolla. And, um, the staff, we then began to look into, um, the use of the residential property and how it was being used for this purpose. And we then investigated it and, um, took photos and tried to compile exactly what the notice of violation was in reference to. And we then sent the notice of violation.
Hey, I'm going to approach the witness, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Let me have one back.
You can have this one. Thank you.
Chair, I handed you an exhibit marked Exhibit 1A.
I have an expert file called a county exhibit 1A. Do you recognize that document?
Yes.
And what is it?
This is the email that was received from Matt Kirkendall to, um, to begin our investigation of the property for Jeep rentals.
And who's Matt Kirkendall?
He was the county, um, county employee, planner one in Corolla.
So he was assigned to the Corolla office at the time?
Yes, sir.
And so you, you received, uh, this, this email from him February, February 17th, 2022? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And, um, so just ask that you, that you, well, the, the board has it. But in particular, um, actually just read the first paragraph, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Young is operating a Jeep rental company out of her home in Corolla Light. She originally was advertising a horse tour for up to 15 people with three Jeeps. Over the weekend, she posted the new company on Facebook, and many of the residents informed her that she is operating outside of our code of ordinances. I spoke with her earlier this week and informed her that all the outdoor tour operator licenses are accounted for. She told me that she will not operate the horse tour, but will continue to rent Jeeps out of her home. She is renting them using Turo. For those not familiar with Turo, it's essentially Airbnb verbo for your vehicles. It's been around for a while, but I believe this may be the first instance we have had to deal with it.
Now, is this a true and accurate copy of the, uh, email that was sent by Matt, Matthew Kirkendall on February 17th, 2022?
Yes, sir.
And is it, is it a record that's, that's kept in the ordinary course of business for the Currituck County, um, planning department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. County would move for admission of county exhibit 1A, Mr. Chairman?
Can you repeat that, please?
County would move for admission of county exhibit 1A?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so Ms. Cherry, after, upon receiving, um, the email from Matthew Kirkendall, what did you do?
We then, um, I brought this to other planners' attentions and, um, began looking into the Unified Development Ordinance as well to see the zoning, um, of the subject property. And then we went to, um, inspect the property to see what was actually happening to, um, to follow with the complaint. And then we, um, compiled the information that we had gathered and, um, I typed up the notice of violation.
So what was the date of the, uh, the visit to the property?
I believe it was March 1st. Yes.
Okay, and it's a picture that's shown on the screen identified as Picture 1, and in the agenda pack also identified as, um, Picture 1, the property of the applicant.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It's a picture that's shown on the screen and also in the agenda packet with the identification of Picture 1.
Yes.
The applicant's property.
Yes.
And is this how it appeared, uh, at the time of your visit on March 1st?
This photo was taken by Matt Kirkendall on March 1st.
Okay. Um, and so what, what did you determine from this photograph regarding the use of the property?
So at the time, I had been on the Turo website and identified the vehicles to the best of my knowledge, based on the photos that had been posted. And the photos that Matt took in the Corolla at 1086 Hampton Street closely aligned with those photos. And so we then proceeded.
Okay. And you then proceeded to do what?
To, um, send the notice of violation for the Jeep rentals.
Okay, but you, you mentioned this Turo site that you went to. Um, is Picture 2 a true and accurate copy of what you, uh, observed or read or saw on the Turo, this Turo website?
Yes.
Okay. And would you please read, uh, you have that in front of you, or if you can see it? You just read, read the paragraph under the heading "About Misty."
Would you like to me, to read the paragraph "About Misty" below that?
Yes.
Okay. "Hi all, I'm full, I'm a full-time Corolla resident and lover of the horses in 4x4 Beach. It's my goal to make sure you have a great time while you're here on vacation and enjoying epic Jeep for your rental needs."
So "Enjoying epic Jeep for your rental needs" was what was posted on this site?
Yes.
Okay, then moving to Picture 3 on the screen and in the agenda package, what does, what does that depict?
This is the profile for each of the Jeeps that have been posted for rental and available in Cor, in Corolla.
Okay, and did you make a comparison or recognize any of these vehicles, uh, shown in these pictures on the Turo website, um, with the photograph taken by your staff member of the applicant's property on March 1st?
Yes.
And what was the determination that you made?
That the Jeeps were the same Jeeps that were posted online for rent.
Okay, so, um, so then what, what did you do next after doing the, your initial investigation?
The notice of violation was sent on March 2nd.
All right, I want to, may I approach the witness?
Yes.
So you, Chair, when I just asked to be marked, um, Mr. Chairman, it's county's exhibit 1B for purposes of identification.
Okay.
1B.
Did you identify the document, uh, marked as county exhibit 1B for purposes of identification? Ms. Chair?
Yes.
And what, what is that document?
This document is an affidavit that I mailed the notice of violation on March 2nd.
And that's a requirement of general statute now that when a notice of violation is issued, that the issuing agency fill out this affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is this a, a true and accurate copy of the affidavit that you executed on March the 11th, 2022? And is it a record that's normally kept in the regular practice of your department?
Yes.
We, Mr. Chairman, the county would move for admission of county exhibit 1B.
Okay, granted.
So what then did you continue to do, if anything, with regard to this matter following issuance of the notice of violation?
We then began to still monitor the Turo website to see if there were continued rentals of the vehicles and, um, to monitor location, um, and make sure that it was still remaining in Corolla. Um, normally throughout this month process of a violation, we continue to investigate to see if the property has to come into compliance. And so, um, with this Jeep rental company being on online platform, it looked a little different than normal. And so, um, we kept monitoring the reviews and the, the trip count. So that's what you see in your, in my staff report, is the continuation of monitoring the online and also, um, checking on the property for the, the storage of the vehicles.
Do you have the agenda package in front of you, Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I refer you to packet page 21.
Yes.
Um, would you read the first, the first sentence of the first review?
Super easy reservation and pickup process. We had a brand-new, well-appointed vehicle.
And if you go down to the, uh, the third review under the name of Jackson, and in particular, the, the, the last three sentences?
We felt proud to drive it and we had the best time exploring the beaches in it. We hope to rent with Misty and Erin again next time we visit. Thank you for, thank you all for the best day.
And then continuing on to page 22. Is this also a screenshot from the Turo website?
Yes, sir.
And under the name of Hallie, would you please read the first sentence?
Yes. "This was our second time renting Misty's Jeep for the day, and it was still a great experience."
And then, um, under Jennifer, that comment?
One car for beach driving and seeing the wild horses.
And then under Hallie, again, February 12th, 2022, the last sentence?
We definitely, we will definitely rent from Misty and her family again in the future, who are all super nice people.
Okay, and then you continue to review the Turo website?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then continuing on to packet page 23, is that another screenshot from the Turo's website that you observed?
Yes, sir. This was an updated, um, screenshot of the profile with the updated trip count for each vehicle and overall trip count and the approximate location of the pickup location.
So for example, uh, under, under the name of each vehicle, there is in parentheses a count of trips-
Yes, associated with that vehicle.
And again, uh, and under "About Misty," would you, would you, uh, again read that?
"Hi all, I'm a full-time Corolla resident and lover of the horses in 4x4 Beach. It's my goal to make sure you have a great time while you're here on vacation and enjoying an epic Jeep for your rental needs."
And so then packet page 24 and page 25 are just continued, continued, uh, monitoring of the Turo site-
Yes, again, just updated trip counts.
And, and, and each of these, uh, documents from page 19 through 26, are they true and accurate copies of screenshots of the Turo website related to an account entitled Misty?
Yes, sir.
And who, did you make those screenshots?
Yes, sir, myself.
Okay. And are these now records that are kept in the course of the regular business of your agency?
Yes, sir.
Going on to page 26, what is the significance of, uh, page 26?
So the top is a screenshot of the approximate location of the pickup location. And, um, we wanted to be more specific with the identifying property. And so, um, the bottom, Picture 11, is a GIS screenshot of her property and the subject property. And, um, you can see that they're exactly aligned.
Well, so, so the, the, the Picture 11 from the county's, is that from the county GIS?
Yes, sir.
Mapping system? And, and so that, that, I guess, just shows that the applicant's property or lot is contained within the Turo location circle. Is that correct? All right, continuing on to page 27, identified as Picture 12.
Picture 12 was another photo taken of the property of the storage of the vehicles.
And do you know what date that was taken?
Picture 12 was taken on April 20th.
April 20th?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is, did you take that picture?
I did take that picture myself.
Is that a true and, and, uh, accurate copy of the picture and, and the way in which the property looked at the time that you took the picture?
Yes, sir.
And is this picture and document now a part of the regular, records kept in the regular course of your agency's business?
Yes, sir.
Went on then to page 28. Could you please explain to the board?
Again, this is another updated profile from the Turo website. Um, there's an additional vehicle and an updated trip count.
Okay, and what was the date that you took this screenshot?
This is photo 13, and it was also taken on April 20th, the same day I visited and took the photo previously.
Okay, and then continuing on with packet page 30. What, what is, please describe this in the-
It's also an updated version of the same Turo profile.
Okay, and again, it's showing that the trips, that, that are the times, I guess, that, that these vehicles have been used?
Yes.
Same with packet page 31, is that correct?
Yes, and it includes an additional vehicle.
Okay, so now, there have been four, and now that you've identified that, or at least the slide is showing that there is now a fifth vehicle.
Correct.
In packet page 32, the photograph that's pictured, this documented is picture 16, what is, what is that showing?
Picture 16 is an updated approximate location of the pickup location and it had changed from being in Corolla Light to now Monterey Shores.
And before we get into the Monterey Shores location, I would refer you to packet page 33. And ask you, what is that document?
This is the notice of violation number 1708 that was sent on March 2nd.
Okay, and that, that is a notice of violation subject to this appeal, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now going back to the Monterey Shores location, ma'am?
Objection. That is irrelevant to this notice of violation.
I'll hear the county's case.
Well, I can rephrase, but this is a continuation of the investigative and monitoring process following the issuance of the notice of violation on March 2nd.
Okay, I just want my objection to go on record that I am objecting to this because it is not relevant to the current notice of violation.
Okay, duly noted. Can you continue?
Thank you. May I approach the witness?
Yes.
So, do you want, uh, marking as a county exhibit 1C now?
I'd like to make an objection really quickly, one more thing. Everybody's aware that an appeal was filed, correct, on March 30th?
What's the basis of your objection?
Um, this is illegal. It's considered harassment. Nothing is supposed, no punitive actions are supposed to be taken against me once an appeal is filed.
Can, can we? We allowed the board to kind of take a look at this and see if your objection is, is warranted because I don't even know what this is yet. 1C. Okay, have you all read, read that? So, so what is the basis for your objection?
Um, what day was my appeal filed with Curritah County?
But no, please, just, I'm, I'm.
Uh, my basis is that this is after my appeal was filed and before my hearing, correct?
Yes, it appears so.
Okay, so, is this legal? Is this legal correspondence?
Any correspondence is legal. It's, it's correspondence.
Um, is it legal for them to tell me that I need to tell them where my vehicles are located before my appeal?
All right, that's not an objection in regards to this letter, but you can certainly talk about that when it comes to your turn about your concerns about this letter. He's introduced it, he's introducing it into evidence and when it comes to you, you can talk about your concerns about that, but.
Okay, I, I'd like to say, I mean, if we're going to enter this, I need the county to go ahead and enter another exhibit and that's the second violation I received after my appeal date.
So, so, just so you understand, the county is presenting a case. Right, and so as part of their case, they're allowed to present whatever evidence that, that they want to present to us as a board and we will review that evidence as part of this hearing. You also are allowed to present evidence when you are given the opportunity to present your case. But I, I don't think you can really dictate to them what evidence they ask to be entered, right?
Okay, but I'm just saying that I feel like they're leaving out a significant piece of evidence.
When it comes to your turn, you can talk about what you think they're leaving out.
Right, as soon as the, the county is done with their presenting their case here, then you're going to be given an opportunity to do the exact same thing. You can call witnesses, you can do whatever you like to present, present your case and you can address that at that time.
Okay. Well, you can, when it comes turn to ask her questions, you can ask her about this letter.
Okay, Ms. Chair, what is the document that is marked county exhibit 1C for purposes of identification?
So, this was a written letter that was provided in an email on July, on June 7th, excuse me. It was also mailed to the address that's listed above. And this was a statement that, to provide us information to show that they had come into compliance. We had seen that the Jeeps were no longer located at 1086 Hampton Street in Corolla. And since it's a Jeep rental. Operation, the Jeeps could have been just rented temporarily and so we wanted more evidence to show that this had ceased or she had relocated them. And then also, the second portion of the email was in reference to this meeting tonight. There was a BOA sign that was placed in the right of way of the property and it had been removed. And so we were stating that it would be appropriate for that public notice to be placed back on the property.
And so did you, and is this, is this written by you?
Yes.
Okay, and this is a true and accurate copy of the communication that you sent to the applicant on June 7th, 2022?
Yes.
And is this document one that is kept in the regular business activity of your agency?
Yes.
And so did you receive a response from the applicant to this communication?
Yes, sir.
But did you subsequently learn, well, and, and what was the purpose for? Advising the applicant of, of means to comply with the, with the UDO?
So, since there are two separate notice of violations, the first portion was an attempt to come into compliance with the second notice of violation. And which would also come into compliance with the first, which is now being appealed tonight. And so the second portion was an attempt to provide public notice for this BOA meeting tonight.
I mean, was it a, were you, did you have some belief that perhaps? Compliance had occurred and there was no need to further pursue any action against the applicant?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Possibly since there were no Jeeps located on the property.
And did you, subsequent to writing and forwarding this communication to the applicant, learn? Where the vehicles may have been located?
Yes, we then received information that the Jeeps had been relocated to Monterey Shores, which was also confirmed by the Turo updated website, which is picture 16.
Which is picture 16, which you just testified to a few moments ago. Okay, if I may approach the witness. Chair, I show you the document that, uh, asked you March as county exhibit 1D for purposes of identification.
Yes.
I have a question for the county. Is this Amy Wiggins here?
Hold, hold on one second. But did you, can you hold your questions for them when the time comes for you to ask them questions?
Do you recognize this document marked as county exhibit 1D?
Yes.
And what is that?
This was a letter that was sent to the county indicating that there was, the Jeeps were being stored in Monterey Shores and. They wanted to let us know that they were pursuing enforcement from their, from their perspective.
Okay, objection. This is hearsay. Is this witness here that I can cross-examine them?
Do you want to be heard?
If I may ask the, the witness questions to provide for an exception to the hearsay rule? I would like to do so and then allow for the board to make its determination.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that.
Ms. Chair, is this a true and accurate copy of the document received by your department?
Yes.
And is it a record that is regularly kept in accordance with the business activity of your department?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we would. Say that the document is relevant and should be admitted on the basis of the business record exception to the hearsay rule.
Can you explain what that exception is?
I may not have your attorney explain.
So, the business record exception are records that are kept or maintained in the regular course of business by certain organizations, businesses, medical records. They are. Generated and. Generally generated with, within the business for which they are asserted. In regards to. Hearsay and. We follow the rules of evidence here in regards to hearsay not being permitted. The, actually the statute says that when there is an inherent reli, inherent reliability in terms of the source of information or the information, the county can, the board can consider that. So, I guess my question would be to know a little bit more about what dealings the county has with. Miss, with the homeowners association in Monterey Shores. If there was further confirmation. To this, to what was alleged in this letter and things of that nature before I think the chair could rule on that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll ask questions along those lines. Ms. Chair, does, does your agency, to your knowledge, have a relationship with the Monterey Shores PUD homeowners association as a planning agency?
I would say yes, considering that we, they are a part of our zoning districts and the property owners association.
Objection. Unfortunately, because this person is not here and it's factually inaccurate, I'm not able to cross-examine them and so I.
So, I understand your objection, which was an objection based on hearsay. Right now, the county is doing something called Vordier, which they're asking specific line of questioning to determine if this evidence can be admitted. So, we're, we're considering your objection and just hang tight and just let them finish these, this line of question, okay? We'll get back to that in just a minute.
Thank you.
And Ms. Chair, did, did you or anyone in your department do anything upon receipt of this letter from Monterey Shores homeowners association?
Yes, we then went to the Drifting Sands parking lot in Monterey Shores to see if the vehicles had been relocated there, which would mean that they were still in Corolla. And they were, we found multiple vehicles over multiple days to show that they had been relocated to the Monterey Shores PUD.
Some members of your staff and/or you actually viewed the, the vehicles to be located within Monterey Shores as set out in this letter of June 7th, 2022, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is what is shown on the screen. I guess also containing the agenda package photographs taken at that location in Monterey Shores?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is those true, is that, are those true and accurate pictures?
Yes, sir.
Taken on what day?
So, the gray Jeep was taken on June 8th and the pink and the red were taken the following days by another staff member.
Okay, and, and are those photographs, documents that are kept in the regular course of your agency's business?
Yes.
Based upon that, Ms. Chairman, we would again move for admission of. The June 7th, 20, a document that marked as county exhibit 1D for purposes of identification.
All right, now I'm going to rely on Ms. Wumble's recommendation here.
So, I think that in terms of the admission here, I believe that this is being submitted really more like a report of a violation. Just like we would receive a phone call or an email, the county would receive an email, a letter from a complaining citizen. And this prompted them to take action. So, I don't know necessarily the county is introducing it for the truth of the matter asserted, which would be what the hearsay exception would be. But as much as that it's an exhibit showing what prompted county to take action. And then their subsequent actions, that this would be cooperation to their action. So, it would not qualify as hearsay because it's not being submitted for the truth of that because it corroborates what the county pursued after that.
Right, okay. All right, I'll accept that and we'll instruct the board to view this document in that, that light.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, Ms. Chair, have there been any other violations or notices of violations issued to the applicant regarding the use of her property at 1086 Hampton Street?
Yes, sir.
May I approach the witness?
Yes.
Chair, hang the document that I would ask to be marked as county exhibit 1E for purposes of identification.
And I will like to say I did, I did neglect to allow the, the board members to ask any questions of Ms. Turner. So, you know, when we ask questions here, we may ask her to come back and see if there's any questions for the board. That's, that's my, my error, so I apologize for that.
Certainly. Ms. Chair, do you recognize the document marked as county exhibit 1E for purposes of identification?
Yes.
And what is that?
This is a notice of violation that was sent on April 21st.
And why was that notice of violation issued?
Because upon further investigation of the property and the violations was that this is also a, in violation of our home occupation standards.
Okay, what is the home occupation standard? What does that mean?
So, you're allowed to have a home occupation in any of the residential zoning districts and there are certain standards that have to be met in order to have a home occupation.
That, that you're basically allowed to operate a business from your home if it meets certain ordinance requirements, is that right? Okay, and. This was a, this was a violation in addition to that which has been appealed tonight, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Has the county taken any enforcement action regarding the notice of violation that is before the board tonight under appeal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, would you please, what was the violation description and then if you would walk through the attachment to describe to the board of the determination that the home occupation? Requirements were not met for a business use on this particular property?
So, the violation description reads automotive rentals are being conducted at 1086 Hampton Street in Corolla Light planned unit development. The subject property is zoned SFO and with the PUD overlay and designated for residential development in the most recent approved sketch plan for the PUD. Vehicles being offered for rental on the website Turo are being stored on the subject property. Use of the property is not in compliance with the UDO. Next, you can continue on the attached page. UDO section 4.3.3L regulates home occupations. Use of the subject property is not in compliance with the home occupation standards. The automotive rentals being conducted on the subject property do not meet the following specific standards of the UDO section 4.3.3. L home occupations. All vehicles used in connection with the home occupation are of a size and located on the premises in such a manner as to not disrupt the quiet nature and visual quality of the neighborhood and there are no more than one vehicle per home occupation.
Ms. Chair, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There are at least four vehicles offered on the Turo website being stored on the subject property. Does that mean to continue?
Yes, please.
The property contains no outdoor display or storage of goods, equipment or services that are associated with the home occupation. There are at least four vehicles offered on the Turo website being stored on the subject property on a rotating basis.
And was this notice of violation appealed in the time required by the Unified Development Ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And so, the consequence of that is, to your understanding, what?
We can continue with civil citations to come towards compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance.
And is your understanding that the determination made by code enforcement regarding this violation is now binding?
Yes, sir.
And is this a true and accurate copy of the notice of violation that was issued on April 21, 2022?
Yes, sir.
Is this a document that's kept in the regular conduct of your agency's business?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the county would move for admission of county exhibit 1E.
Okay, absolutely.
If I may approach the witness one more time, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Cherry, I'd ask you to identify county exhibit 1F, if you know what that is?
This is the second affidavit of service saying that I mailed the second notice of violation on April 21, 2022.
And was that affidavit of service executed by you in accordance with statute to verify the issuance of the April 21, 2022 notice of violation? Is that a true and accurate copy of the affidavit of service that you executed on or about April 21, 2022?
Yes, sir.
And is that a record that's kept in the regular conduct of your agency's business? Chairman, the county would move for admission of county exhibit 1F.
Okay, so granted.
That will be all the questions I have at this time for Ms. Cherry. Mr. Chairman, although we would, I know this numbering system is kind of skewed, but we would move for admission of all the other county exhibits that are contained within the board's agenda packages, as Ms. Cherry has testified to them throughout her testimony.
So, I think you started with 1A, so I would suggest that maybe we make county 1 the agenda packet, the report and the attachment.
Yeah, that was kind of what I was thinking that we might do, so that makes sense.
Perfect, okay.
All right, and can we also make a note of the, and I think you may have already done it, but the hearsay exception discussion as well for, since we had 1 Delta was the original number of that document.
Those are the questions I have of Ms. Cherry and Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and at this time, I think I would like to have the board members ask questions of Ms. Cherry, and then perhaps have Ms. Turner come back if there are questions for her from the board. Okay? Any questions for Ms. Cherry at this time?
No, just fine.
I have one. So, just so the board understands the basis of the second NOV, is there any reason why the second, because it seems like the basis for the second NOV existed at the time the first NOV was issued. So, my question is, why was there a approximately two-month delay in the issuance of the second NOV versus the first?
Yes, so this came up at the beginning of looking into this violation, and we often send the second notice of violations when there is a section of the code that was neglected to be included in the first one. And so, we felt like it did not meet these standards as well, and so, we included it in the second notice of violation.
Okay. And you did say, I didn't, I couldn't tell from the information packet that we have here, but you did say the screenshots that you took, do you have documented dates of the dates of the screenshots? They're not on the...
Yes, they should be in the first two pages of the staff report.
Okay.
All the dates are shown at the beginning of the bullet, and then each attachment is listed below.
Let's see. Anything else from the board?
I have a question. At the time, how you doing, Ms. Cherry?
Doing very well, hope you are.
At the time that we received this particular letter...
Yes.
And at the time you all investigated this letter about the presence of vehicles in Monterey Shores, how were you able to identify the vehicles that existed in that parking area? Were the plates run by the sheriff's department, or were the plate numbers verified by the previous pictures that were taken at 1086 Hampton?
So, the information came to us, and I happened to be in Corolla that day, and so I went to the approximate location that was shown on Turo, and pulled into the Drifting Sands parking lot, and there were not many vehicles there at all, maybe five, and two of them were Jeeps parked next to each other. And so, I then went on the Turo website to see which Jeeps were still listed as available for rent, and the gray one had very obvious details that matched up with the pictures that were shown on the Turo website. And then, the pink Jeep and the red Jeep, which had been shown, the same license plate again since earlier investigations, showed up again when another staff member went to take a picture of the same parking lot. And each time, there were not many other cars in the parking lot, so it was kind of obvious that these were a little bit of a different situation.
So, definitely, yes, plates were verified based on previous pictures.
Yes, the OVX Wonder Woman one matches with pictures I have shown on the property.
Okay. Also, another question, if the board were to rule in favor of the county on these notice of violations, what is the rate per day that the county could charge for noncompliance of the violations?
Objection. I'm sorry, but you stated that the plates were ran, and she confirmed that, and I am going to say that that is inaccurate.
You can testify to that, that's not an objection.
Right, that's, I'm going to overrule that, that's, you can speak to that when your term comes.
Would you like me to re-ask the question?
Yes, please.
When it comes to, if the county were to rule in, or if the board of adjustment here tonight were to rule in favor of the county, that you all made no errors, and that the, these notice of violations were accurate, what is the rate per day that the county could charge the appellant for noncompliance?
So, on the bottom of the notice of violations that were sent, there's a statement that says, please be advised that failure to comply with the above may result in civil penalties assessed by the county of up to $500 per day for each day that the violation exists.
So, at this time, the county has not charged the appellant anything at this time because...
Correct.
We haven't adjudicated it here as of yet, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Another little question. It says, $500 per day for each day the violation exists, would that mean with two violations that the penalty would be $1,000 a day?
It could be if both violations are, yes.
Okay.
And I have an additional follow-up question. So, notwithstanding the assertion within the Monterey Shores letter, but if the vehicles are removed or had been removed from the residence to another location, would that have brought the complainant back into compliance with the first NOV?
So, the email in the letter that I sent stating that we needed more information to show that this business had been terminated or had been relocated was sent prior to us receiving the letter showing that the Jeeps had been relocated to Monterey Shores. So, with us going and investigating and showing that the Jeeps had been removed from the property, we needed further information because it could have just all been rented that day, and we were not 100% sure of the situation. And so, we needed a little bit more information to show that the property had come into compliance.
Okay, so you're saying removal of the vehicles to another suitable storage location away from the residence would have resolved the notice of violation?
Yes. If the business wanted to continue, special use permit would be needed, or a zoning compliance permit, depending on the zoning.
Okay.
Am I correct in saying, Ms. Cherry, that no special use permit applications have been submitted by the appellant to date?
That's to my knowledge, yes.
And I just want to make sure, Troy, I understand your question, just so we're not, I just want to make sure procedurally I understand your question. Are you asking about that notice, the vehicles being removed, as if it would absolve the notice of violation, or make it moot, or kind of what's your question? Because the notice of violation is issued for what was occurred, what was present as of the date of violation.
Right.
What happens after that?
Right.
Is...
Right, but I do know that when notices of violation are issued, you know, sometimes the recipient of the notice of violation in the county, you know, can work together to resolve it before it comes here.
Right.
So, that was kind of my question is, you know, would removing those vehicles from the residence, you know, perhaps have resolved this issue before it came here?
I understand, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I, we weren't asking if it just meant the notice violation disappeared.
Right.
It still exists on the record.
Right, 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 exactly.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I had one other question for Ms. Cherry, and it may be a question that the county attorney may have to answer, but as we have seen tonight as presented, the two notice of violations also had an affidavit of service that was recorded as well. Did, is it necessary for an email? She had mentioned that this email was emailed and also sent via United States Postal Service. Does it also have to have an affidavit of service, or is that only for the violations that they have to have it?
Well, she can probably answer that, but for that question.
May I ask which email you're holding up first?
Yes. This was the February 17, 2022.
This was the Matthew Kirkendall, the email from staff.
Okay, so, I did not send that email, so I would not have written a affidavit of service. But we receive complaints daily by phone or by email, and we do not, we just enter them into the system of munis.
So, typically, only a notice of violation has to have the recorded affidavit...
Yes.
...of service. Thank you.
And that's a standard in the ordinance.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further?
So, she, Ms. Young would have, Young, did I say that right? Yes, Ms. Young would have the opportunity to ask her questions, if the board had no other questions for her.
Yeah, and, but I did want to, and maybe we can talk about how we want to do this. I would like to have Ms. Turner come back and see if there's any questions from the board for her that we neglected to ask, and then we could come back to...
That's fine.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Turner?
I do.
Yeah, so we have at least one.
Okay, so, Ms. Cherry, if you'll just step aside for a second. Ms. Young, we'll call her back up, and you can ask her some questions in a minute, if you'll return in a stand, please.
I apologize for calling you back up, Ms. Turner. I meant to have the board have an opportunity to ask you some questions the first time, and we got moving a little fast, so...
No worries.
So, any questions for Ms. Turner?
I have a couple. How you doing, Ms. Turner?
Doing well, thank you.
I have a question, this is kind of an abstract question. This is in regards to the off-site parking that is mentioned on the 2URO website, where they're not, customers that rent the vehicles aren't actually going to the appellant's home, but they were picking them up at a different parking area, perhaps the Whalehead parking area and/or the Monterey parking area. Is either one of those areas over 2,000 feet away from the subject home of the appellant? You may have to have a GIS for that.
Yeah, definitely. I don't, I do not know the answer to that.
If you had to estimate, would you say that either one of those parking lots are greater than a half a mile away from their house?
Can you go back to the, well, the pictures are here.
I have an objection.
What's the basis of your objection?
The letter in the email, the email that the county...
All right. Your objection would have to be based on what she's talking about right now.
It is, it is. So, let me find it, they...
Are you alleging it's hearsay? Are you alleging it's not relevant, her testimony? You're alleging that she's testifying to something differently than what you have? Then you can ask her about that when she's done testifying.
Okay, so, was it Steven? You asked her, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Rattick. You asked her, you asked Jenny if the Whalehead Club parking lot or the Monterey Shores parking lot were over 2,000 feet away from our residence?
Yes.
My objection is that in this letter, it said that I was currently meeting customers at the Whalehead parking lot.
Hold on.
Okay.
If she's testifying to something differently than what you have in the letter, you can ask her about that when she's done answering their questions, and it's your turn to ask questions.
Okay.
All right, so just hang on.
And I'll give you a little logic, just to help you understand my thinking, is that when she was speaking about the UDO, she mentioned in those sections, those long sections she read, about off-site parking for rental services, and she mentioned 2,000 feet. That was the point of my question, just to determine whether or not either of those parking areas were 2,000 feet or greater away from your dwelling.
Got it. I think I can address your question. So, the 2,000 square, the 2,000 feet was in relation to RV rentals specifically, and does not apply to general automobile sales and rentals. It was some recent language adopted by the board that uses primarily involving the sales or rentals of, rental of recreational vehicles or travel trailers may include one off-site storage area. And that was one of the standards for those, so not really relevant to this.
Thank you very much, that helped to clarify that, but I just wanted to affirm or deny whether that was accurate in their case. And we had already stated that rent is not defined in our UDO, but it is defined where you all used Webster's to determine that definition of renting.
Correct, yes.
And on the permissible use tables that are in the UDO, it, the SFO with the PUD overlay does not allow rentals of vehicles, is that correct?
If the...
Without a special use permit?
Without a special use permit and property designated commercial, correct.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
All right. So, with that special use permit, would the subject property have to also be deemed commercial?
It would, yes.
Is that possible under the current zoning, that location?
So, it would need an amended sketch plan approval, amended master plan, basically a zoning approval for designating the property as general business or commercial use, as opposed to the residential use that it's currently designated as. And then, the special use permit could be heard after the property is reclassified within the master plan for Corolla Light planned unit development.
Okay. All right, any further questions from the board? All right, Ms. Young, I'll allow you to redirect, but please keep it to the second discussion that we've had with Ms. Turner, the last few questions from myself and my colleague here.
Is Matt Kirkendall here tonight?
No.
Okay, so he said currently she is meeting customers at the Whalehead Club parking lot. Do you have any proof of that?
No.
Where's Matt? So this is hearsay? This entire letter is hearsay?
No, it was admitted as a business record because that is a record kept within the regular course of business of the county correspondence between staff members, planning, zoning, enforced code enforcement. Those are records kept within the regular course of business, similar to medical records where there would be nurses' notes, doctor notes, correspondence within the office. Those are considered to be business records.
Okay, so I would like to put on the record that Matt says, for those not familiar with Turo, it's essentially Airbnb, V R B O, for your vehicles.
Okay, you can put all that on the record when it's your turn to present your case. I know, I keep stopping you, but we got to keep everyone's procedure going straight. So do you have any more questions for Ms. Turner?
Ms. Turner, did you say something...were you saying that the Monterey Shores overflow parking lot would have to have a commercial use or...what was that we were talking about? About Corolla Light? I'm not really sure that last part that you guys were talking about.
Is this in relation to the question that Mr. Craddock asked regarding the parking lot?
Uh-huh.
I don't believe I did say that. I referenced the specific use standards in the ordinance that he was recalling from my earlier reading of the ordinance, and that that was related to specifically to recreational vehicle and did not apply to automobile and truck.
Okay, I just...I feel like there was something after that that I wasn't really putting together about a zoning for Corolla Light or a parking lot.
Mr. Craddock asked a question about the...whether the special use permit, if all the subject property would need would be a special use permit, was it already zoned appropriately for that? And she answered his question by saying it...you could get a special use permit there potentially, but you would have to first reclassify from residential to commercial, and then after that was done, you could pursue a special use permit.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have no further questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
So we'll have Ms. Cherry come back.
Yep, we'll have Ms. Cherry come back, and Ms. Young can ask Ms. Cherry some questions about her testimony. All right, go ahead, Ms. Young.
Ms. Cherry, I just want to go over our timeline, the day that I was cited, the day that I appealed, the day that I was then...my civil rights were then violated, and I was then cited again for the same violation, just paraphrase differently, still civil rights violation. And I'd like you to read to me Section 954 in your county ordinances under Enforcement Procedures, Remedies and Penalties. Section A, Investigation of...hold on, Section E, Notice of Appeal. I'd like you to read that to me in referring to the second violation that I received after my act of appeal.
Could you repeat the section of the U D O?
Yeah, so it's 954, Enforcement Procedure, Section E. I'd like you to read to me the notice of appeal.
Filing of a Notice of Appeal Regarding an Alleged Violation of This Ordinance Shall Stay Further Action by the County Until the Appeal Has Been Reviewed and Decided by the Board of Adjustment. See Section 2.4, seventeen, Appeal.
Okay, would you like to get a Webster's dictionary and go ahead and define further action for me?
That's not defined in Webster's dictionary. That's a phrase.
But I mean, well, further an action...
I think the board can take notice about what the words "further action" means, and you can ask your question. I mean, we're not going to antagonize the witness, so just ask your questions.
Okay, so can we pull up the first violation? Because I don't have a copy of that. The county did not provide me that. I mean, I have it, but I mean, I'll pull it up.
Page packet thirty...page thirty-three. Of the packet.
Okay, can you go ahead and read to myself and the board the violation description, please?
Automotive rentals are being conducted without a special use permit at 1086 Hampton Street in Corolla Light Planned Unit Development. The subject property is zoned S F O and PUD overlay and designated for residential development in the most recent approved sketch plan for the PUD. Automotive rentals are not permitted to be operated from this property.
Okay, very good. And then can you tell me the date of this violation?
March 2nd, 2022.
Okay, and can you tell me the date I filed an appeal?
I believe it was March 30th.
Okay, and can you go ahead and pull the second violation and read to me the violation description?
The second notice of violation, which was sent on April 21st. Automotive rentals are being conducted at 1086 Hampton Street in Corolla Light Planned Unit Development. The subject property is zoned S F O and PUD overlay and designated for residential development in the most recent approved sketch plan for the PUD. Vehicles being offered for rental on the website Turo are being stored on the subject property. Use of the property is not in compliance with the U D O, continued on the attached page. Would you continue?
No. Can you go ahead and tell me the difference between the first violation description and the second violation description?
So the second violation description continues on the second page to outline that it is in violation of the standards of the home occupation standards.
Does it say that?
Let her answer a question fully before you ask your next question.
Okay.
And the first violation is stating that it is that you are in violation of conducting car rentals in a PUD and a zoned residential parcel.
Okay, but my question is, in the violation description, what is the difference between the first violation and the second violation description?
The description is continued on the second page, and it is outlined further that you are in violation of the home occupation standards.
Okay, but that's not...the county is aware that in their ordinance, it says filing a notice of appeal regarding alleged violation of this ordinance shall stay further action by the county until the appeal has been reviewed and decided by the Board of Adjustment. Now, I know what you're trying to say, that then the county decided after my appeal that they were going to try to find...
Mr. Chairman, it's a testimony in the course of asking questions of the witness.
What's that?
So you're kind of getting a narrative, so if you'll ask her a question for her to answer.
Okay, so like Troy said, he brought up a very good point. At what point did the county decide that they were going to then try to come up with another violation to cite me with? Because they may have possibly realized that they cited me improperly with the first violation.
You were not cited improperly for the first violation. That's what we're here to appeal. And the second violation, you had the opportunity to also appeal. And so the second violation was in addition to the first one and that you were in violation of separate standards of the U D O.
Okay.
And we felt like it needed to be added and a second violation be sent.
However, you just said in addition to the first violation, and was there an appeal on file for the first violation?
Yes.
Okay, so is the county aware what due process is in the United States?
I think you...I think you may be misinterpreting that further action, and you know, you can...
My attorney is not misinterpreting, and my civil rights attorney in Raleigh is not misinterpreting it.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the further action is related to the specific violation that was cited. So if there's an appeal for a specific notice of violation and a specific incidence, further action on that incident is stayed until the appeal is heard, meaning that penalties and other things that would stem from the notice of violation would be stayed until
Okay.
the appeal is heard. Is that correct?
So we are treating these notice of violations as two separate notice of violations. And so my understanding is that the further action would be civil penalties. Also, you are allowed to provide corrective action plan to allow an extension into your compliance date, and neither of those actions have been taken towards further action on the notice of violation 1708.
Okay, unfortunately, the first violation description and the second violation description and the compliance request to terminate automotive rentals from 1086 Hampton Street and the compliance request to terminate automotive rentals from 1086 Hampton Street are the exact same, irrelevant to the U D O code reference. It is the same violation.
Do you have a question? You're telling her things.
Yes, my question is, was she aware that there was an appeal on record for the first violation and that then she then cited me again for the same thing a second time during an act of appeal?
Yes, I was aware you had an appeal on the first violation, and the second violation is not exactly the same. There was a continued page that outlined different standards.
It doesn't matter. It's the same thing. And a competent...
Question?
Yes.
Argue. Do you have a question?
Yes, my question is, how would your county define what further action would be when an appeal is filed and how they would define staying further action?
I believe I already outlined that further action would be considered civil penalties for not coming into compliance with the appeal.
Would you consider further action to be going to my property and taking
Violation.
pictures of my property after an appeal is filed?
At that point, we can still determine if you've come into compliance, and also there was a second notice of violation after.
Okay, so we're just going to throw this out of the county ordinance because in my education experience...
Yeah, you've already addressed that you don't agree with them being two separate notices of violation that you feel...
Well, we really need to address the ordinance. It says that filing a notice of appeal regarding alleged violations ordinance shall stay further action by the county until the appeal has been reviewed.
And she's already answered that question. So if you want to talk about that further during your presentation, feel free, but I think she's answered that part of that question.
Okay, we have no further questions.
Thank you.
County, have any follow-up?
Nothing further. That's the county showing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Yeah, would you all like to take maybe a five-minute recess, and then it will be your turn, Ms. Young, to present your case? All right, we're in recess for five minutes, let's say till 8:50 PM. All right, we'd like to call the meeting back into order. All right, Ms. Young, are you prepared to make your case to the board?
I sure am.
So are you going to testify first, or do you have witnesses that you're going to call first?
I don't have...I mean, just my husband and I are here. I have an attorney, but he is unable to be present. My attorney did write my appeal, and I do have two attorneys from Raleigh that are civil rights attorneys, and I also have attorneys from Turo to represent me when we go to court after this is...if this is found unfavorable to me. So but tonight, it's just me.
So if you'll come on up here to this seat so we can all see you and bring whatever you...yeah, that'll be good. Let me get all my stuff together. Sure. And if you forgot something, you can certainly go back and grab it if you realize it up there.
Okay, well, I'd like to start first by asking, or really, I'd like to pass something out because Currituck County thinks they're very clever in defining a peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing business as a car rental agency. You know, peer-to-peer, car-sharing, rental is just a synonym, but I would like to pass something out because North Carolina General Statute actually defines what a peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing is. Can I pass that out?
Yeah, would you like to?
Do you want to? I've got several copies.
Ms. McCree, do you have a copy of this?
I do not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me pass that out to him, too. I would just like to present or begin my presentation by making sure we have a clear definition of what Turo is and what ride-sharing is.
So before you continue, I see this is from...I'm not sure what set of regulations this is from, so can you tell us?
Yes, it's on the bottom. It's on the County General Statute.
Chapter 20. Okay, go ahead and continue.
Okay, can I get one of those copies because I gave too many away?
So let's mark this Appellant One, just for the record.
So I'm sure you guys can all read, but I'm just going to read it for the record. North Carolina General Statute defines peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing as the authorized use of a shared vehicle by an individual other than the shared vehicle owner through a peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing program, AKA Turo. Peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing program, a business platform that connects shared vehicle owners with drivers to enable the sharing of vehicles for financial consideration. A shared vehicle, a vehicle that is available for sharing through a peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing program. A shared vehicle owner is the registered owner of a shared vehicle that is made available for sharing through a peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing platform, again, Turo, and a vehicle-sharing provider, the person or entity that operates, facilitates, or administers the provision of personal vehicle sharing through a peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing program. So with that being said, I understand that Currituck County doesn't have any regulations or ordinances against peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing. That's unfortunate for Currituck County. It is not unfortunate for me, very similar to 10 years ago before there was regulations involving Airbnbs, and Airbnbs were accused of being hotels. Well, I'm sure Currituck County and the state of North Carolina took the opportunity and then started legislation for Airbnbs, and then they were able to regulate it. Unfortunately for Currituck County and the state of North Carolina, there is no regulation about Turo or peer-to-peer vehicle-sharing. Now, we can all call it whatever we would like to call it, but for me to...I'm just going to go ahead and read my appeal. Does everybody have a copy of my appeal?
Yeah.
I believe it's page...yeah, page 37 of our information packet.
Okay, so this is my statement. I had assistance from an attorney. Appellant is... Appellant is the owner of the home located at 1086 Hampton Street. The home is owner-occupied and utilized only as a single-family dwelling in compliance with the permitted uses for the zone. Appellant is the matriarch of a large family of adult children, five in total. All the vehicles located on the property are registered to appellant. The notice of violation 1708 reflects a violation date of March 2nd, 2022. Appellant must effect this appeal within 30 days of receipt. The notice of violation was received March 3rd, 2022, and this appeal is filed on March 30th, 2022. So, for the burden of proof pursuant to section 2.4, .17D1, the board of adjustment determinations shall be based on clear and substantial evidence. The standard of proof requires appellant to demonstrate her argument is more likely to be true than false. So, here's my argument, argument of appellant. The county of Currituck Code Enforcement Program has requested appellant terminate automotive rentals and alleged an illegal automotive sales and rental use. Appellant is not operating a car sale or rental business. Appellant is simply offering her personal vehicles in a car-sharing program, which is not a use defined nor regulated by the county or state. The zoning administrator's decision was based on a standard not contained in the Currituck County zoning ordinance nor any other county ordinances. The county's comparison of car sharing to an automobile sales and rental use is an extreme misrepresentation. An automotive sale and rental use is required by state and local ordinances to be licensed by the Department of Motor Vehicles with an approved site plan. The site plan requires a commercial location and a storefront with off-street parking. In contrast, car sharing does not require a license from the Department of Motor Vehicles, nor does it require a commercial location per county code. The board may equate the county's misrepresentation to the likeness of citing an Uber driver for operation of unlicensed taxi cab service from his home. Another likeness representation would be citing an Airbnb rental as an illegal hotel use. The nature of the car sharing is such that a person will register for a time to share the personal vehicle online. There is a fee for sharing the vehicle. Appellant will then drive the vehicle to the sharer's location and deliver the keys. Once the agreed-upon time expires, appellant retrieves her vehicle from a predetermined location. Sharers are not permitted to inspect the vehicle prior to sharing and are not permitted to come to appellant's home. Appellant bears all the costs associated with maintenance and care of these personal vehicles. The Department of Motor Vehicles will not license car sharing and the county will not permit appellant to rent or sell her personal vehicles from a commercial location. State law prohibits dealers from utilizing dealership inventory vehicles for personal use. To this, a North Carolina business license is not required for car sharing. Car sharing does not constitute a use as defined by the zoning ordinance, nor does it impact the existing residential use of the subject property. Chapter 10 defines use as the purpose for which land or structure is designed or intended, the subject property is intended as a residential use, and appellant's car-sharing initiative has zero impact on the intended use. Profitable hobbies and initiatives not requiring license or regulation by the state have never been within the purview of the zoning ordinance. The administrator's decision was based on a standard not contained in the Currituck County zoning ordinance nor other county ordinances. Appellant firmly believes offering her personal vehicles in a car-sharing program reduces the carbon footprint of sharers and herself. Car sharing offers visitors and residents alike a way to enjoy an off-road experience without needing to purchase an off-road vehicle. Car sharing is in harmony with the zoning ordinance and creates a great sense of community. The car sharing is completely undetectable by the surrounding neighbors. Appellant's personal vehicles do not display placards nor signs. Appellant does not, does not own an excessive number of vehicles, nor do her vehicles occupy space other than her driveway. The board may take notice of the absence of a picture reflecting appellant's disturbance of the surrounding property. The pictures preferred in the notice of violation showing vehicles displayed by the car-sharing website and then another photograph of appellant's personal vehicles parked in her own driveway. Complaints Regarding Violations. This is a little bit deep. It's probably a little bit deeper than we have time to get into tonight, but. Chapter 9 does not contemplate the motive of a complaining witness. However, the board should be aware the complaining witness of this allegation is District 1 Commissioner Bob White. Commissioner White operates an off-road beach tour business and is utilizing governmental enforcement to quell competition. Councilman White's business operations are impacted by citizens participating in off-road car-sharing programs. Commissioner White parks commercial vehicles at his home, also a single-family residence, see Exhibit 1. Do we have that? Does everybody have that?
Yes, it's in the package.
Okay, that's Bob White's house and those are his, um, those are his vehicles. They're all commercially registered. And is clearly not legitimately concerned about the integrity of the zoning districts. Should the board find Commissioner White's frivolous allegation to be factual, this matter will be appealed to a court of competent jurisdiction, and this will expose a good old boy system that decent people find repugnant. Conclusion. The notice of violation is an overreach by the Code Enforcement Program. Car sharing is not a new concept and has never been regulated by the county or state. The zoning administrator's decision via the Code Enforcement Program was based on a standard not contained in the Currituck County zoning ordinance nor other county ordinances. Car sharing is in compliance with the zoning ordinance and fosters a healthy sense of community. In its essential function, car sharing is one person offering personal property for share and charging a fee for the share. Car sharing does not constitute a use as defined by Chapter 10 of the zoning ordinance. The subject property is intended residential use and appellant's car-sharing initiative has zero impact on the intended use. Car sharing does not impact the design or intent of the single-family dwelling. Appellant would ask this honor of the board to reverse the determination of the zoning administrator via the Code Enforcement Program and dismiss the notice of violation. So I'd just like to start there. Anybody have any questions?
I think that, is that everything you have?
No.
You should present everything and then the last questions after they had an opportunity to hear everything.
So, you know, Turo is not a new concept and Turo has a lot of attorneys and lobbyists that are representing people like myself in cases such as this, when the government feels as though they can come in and make things up as they go along or change things because they are new to them and they don't know how to deal with that kind of a situation. But, has anybody gone to Turo's website lately? I know the county has. But anybody in here?
No, you don't, you can't ask the board questions. You just get to present your case.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Turo's website because I'm going to give everybody Okay, so about Turo. Take a look under the hood of the world's largest car-sharing marketplace. Find your drive. Turo is the world's largest car-sharing marketplace where you can book any car you want, wherever you want it, from a vibrant community of trusted hosts across the United States, Canada, and the U. K. Whether you're flying in from afar or looking for a car down the street, searching for a rugged truck or something smooth and swanky, guests can take the wheel of the perfect car for any occasion, while hosts can take the wheel of their futures by building an accessible, flexible, and scalable car-sharing, car-sharing business from the ground up. So, we heard over and over again that Currituck County was going to Turo to see my vehicles and we also saw pictures from Currituck County of my driveway. And I'd like everybody to take notice that there's nothing on my vehicles that designates it of anything other than a privately-owned vehicle. Every one of my vehicles are registered to me. I actually work hand-in-hand with Kill Double Hills Jeep Dealership in procuring my Jeeps and have a very good relationship with them. Kill Double Hills Jeep Rentals is an actual car rental agency and they respect my vehicle peer-to-peer sharing endeavor. And whenever they don't have a vehicle or Jeep for somebody, they give them my phone number and they call me and they recommend Turo to them. There is two other Turo hosts in the Outer Banks. One is the owner of, some of you may find this to be familiar. So, Outer Banks Jeep Rentals, I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that, but the owner of that vehicle, of that business has his vehicles on Turo. And Beach 4x4 Jeep Rentals also has his Jeeps on Turo. And nobody's citing them for running an illegal car rental agency from their home. So, North Carolina state legislation, or the NCSL, has actually addressed car-sharing state laws and legislation in the state of North Carolina, and they have put out on their website, on ncsl.org, research, transportation, car-sharing, state laws and legislation, a definition and what they believe car sharing to be. And I'm going to read that, it's a little bit lengthy, but it's a very good definition. So, and it is from a very good source, which is the NCSL. Car sharing is a free-market approach.
Excuse me, I, I don't know what she's reading from or what NCSL is supposed to be.
I'm defining what car peer-to-peer sharing is.
Do you have a citation for that?
Yes.
Can you tell us what that is?
Yes, it is the North Carolina State Laws and Legislation website, ncsl.org forward slash research, forward slash transportation, forward slash car-sharing, state laws and legislation.
Right, do you have a statutory citation, not the website? Like, like you're at the other, the first thing you passed out was NCGS 20 dash, 20 dash 280 point 15.
Well, I would say that this would support the North Carolina general statute and was written by-
You mean, is this, is this a government organization or is this a-
Yes, the North Carolina State Laws and Legislation is a government organization.
Are, are you, I'm not aware of any government in North Carolina.
Um, it was-
Is that a, is that a peer organization?
This is a government organization. It was written by the National Conference of State-
I have a friend now.
Yes.
Okay, so if you want to try to read this, you gotta let him see it first.
Okay.
If he wants to object to it, he can raise the deck.
Okay, well, he can look at that while I move on to some other points. So let's go back to February 17th, when Matt Kirkendall, who is not present and cannot testify, let's put that on the record, that Matt said all, Ms. Young is operating a Jeep rental company out of her home in Corolla Light. She originally was advertising a horse tour for up to 15 people with three Jeeps. Over the weekend, she posted the new company on Facebook and many other residents informed her that she is operating outside of a code of ordinances. I spoke with her earlier this week and informed her that all the outdoor tour operator licenses are accounted for. She told me that she will not operate the horse tour, but will continue to rent Jeeps out of her home. She is renting them using Turo. For those not familiar with Turo, it's essentially Airbnb, V R B O, for your vehicles. It's been around for a while, but I believe this may be the first instance that we have had to deal with it. Ben, who is present tonight with Corolla Light, has been made aware and they may address it within their HOA restrictive covenants. Ms. Young does own and operate a business in Duck and could possibly rent the Jeeps out of that site. Currently, she's meeting customers at the Whalehead Club parking lot. What are everyone's thoughts? Here are some links to the Facebook and Turo pages. So I just want to break down his email and I would like to start with the, the comment about me advertising for a horse tour for up to 15 people with three Jeeps. That is accurate. When I first purchased my first Jeep last year, I did so because I have five daughters and my second oldest daughter was turning 16. Now, my girls are very special and we tend to throw very extravagant parties for them. So, unfortunately, Corolla is a very quiet place in the off-season and we were not finding what we needed for her, for her party. And I thought that the girls that were coming to her party would enjoy going to the 4x4 area in Jeeps to see the horses. Unfortunately, for the weekend that my daughter's party was scheduled, Kill Double Hills Jeep Rentals did not have any Jeeps available. Whenever I find a need for something in a community or a lack of something in a community, I tend to come up with ways to fill that need and come up with a new business idea. So, I decided, having been an Airbnb host for over a decade of two properties in Corolla, that I was going to buy myself my own Jeep. And I purchased the red Jeep Gladiator, AKA OBX Wonder Woman, because I love Gal Gadot. So, I decided that as a private owner of that Jeep, that I was going to purchase for my family's use, that I would also share that Jeep because I could not possibly be the only person in Corolla or coming to Corolla that was not able to rent a Jeep or find a Jeep or own a Jeep to take them to the 4x4 area. Now, when I first started, I put my Jeep on Turo and got a lot of activity. Clearly, there's a need in the community. Now, I know that Corolla some time ago outlawed Jeep rentals because of the monopoly that the horse tour operators and owners have and how profitable that business is and how one of those- one of those operators is a county commissioner. So a lot of unfair legislation, or whatever you guys would like to call it, is put in place to protect those tour operators. Kiratuck County has made it very difficult for car rental companies to be in Kiratuck County. There's actually an ordinance against it. So the only other alternative that people have to get a Jeep in Corolla is to share it with a Turo host or to borrow it from another owner in Corolla. I'm not the only person in Corolla that's sharing my Jeeps. I want to say that I truly believe if I was renting out my Maseratis or a bunch of Ferraris or Lamborghinis in Corolla on Turo, that we would not be sitting here tonight. I truly believe that this entire violation and ordeal stemmed from a Facebook post that I made, because I was unaware that in order to give a group of friends or strangers a tour to the 4x4 area, that I needed to have a license. When I was informed of this, I told Matt that I would immediately cease and desist any horse tour activity, that I would not take any money for any vehicle tour to go see the horses, that I did not know that I needed a license. I was also told that there were only 10 licenses and that the opportunity for me to get a license ever in my lifetime probably did not exist. So I just want to give that a little backstory on how this got started. I had one Jeep and then I, in February, I bought two more Jeeps. I Kill Double Hills Jeep Dealership and I added them to my Turo account. So then Matt says, she is renting them using Turo. For those not familiar with Turo, it's essentially Airbnb, VRBO for your vehicles. There's literally nothing more telling than that sense, that Turo is essentially just like Airbnb or VRBO, which is sharing your personal house for rent, for profit, for whatever, through an online app that's not regulated. That it's been around for a while, but I believe this may be the first instance that we have had to deal with it. Well, of course, I mean, isn't there always something that happens that then goes on to create ordinances, legislation, laws? There has to be something that happened in order for that to even be brought to anybody's attention. But unfortunately, there is nothing now. So Ben and Corolla Light has been made aware and they may address it within their HOA restrictive covenants, that's fine. But just like an ordinance has to be decided on by its community members and voted into law, so does an HOA restrictive covenant, which has not happened yet. So Corolla Light cannot regulate my peer-to-peer vehicle sharing business either. Ms. Young does own and operate a business in Duck, that is true, and could possibly rent the Jeeps out of that site. That is true. However, bringing my Jeeps to Duck will defeat the purpose of people in Corolla looking for a convenient solution to wanting to go to the 4x4 area and having a vehicle to do it. Then this statement, currently she is meeting customers at the Whalehead Club parking lot, that is very strange, because I have never, ever taken my Jeeps to the Whalehead Club parking lot. I would like to say that I would like to cross-examine Matt on that and ask for his evidence of that, but he is unfortunately not here. So moving right along. I was, after talking to Matt on the phone, the very next day, it seems, and after speaking to... Yes. So the very, it seemed like the very next day, I was cited with this. It seemed very punitive. It seemed as though I had pissed somebody off. And I was just minding my own business and only had one Jeep and somehow upset somebody. Well, I later found out that it was the wife of Bob White. I was harassed on Facebook. I was called out on Facebook and had to take a very defensive position.
I'm going to object as to the relevancy of...
Well, don't you guys all want to know the background?
Well, we're, we're actually here to address the appeal review standards. And so we're trying to get as much evidence as possible so that this board can make our determination based on those standards. So, you know, if it's not something that you can provide in evidence to us, then I question the relevance of it.
Well, I would just say that I was then cited by Kiratuck County after speaking to somebody in Kiratuck County. And of course, I was upset by that violation, because I feel as though it is inaccurate and it is unfair and the violation is... Give me one second. So, appeal review standards. The Board of Adjustment is limited to the following determinations in considering the appeal, which shall be based on clear and substantial evidence in the record. My basis for this appeal is that C, the decision maker made the decision based on a standard not contained in this ordinance or any other appropriate county ordinances, regulations, or state law, and that a standard more strict or broad than the standard established in this ordinance was applied. Now, Kiratuck County has kind of the burden of proof to say that I'm running a commercially operated car rental agency.
Chairman, I'm going to object. This, this is argument, this is not testimony.
Do you have any, do you have any further evidence that you'd like to present to the board?
So, argument, testimony. So if you want to argue the, the standards and the, what you appealed under, argument about the ordinance itself, commentary maybe is the better way for me to say that, is argument. So after you're done presenting evidence, so in terms of your case presentation, so here is where you would talk about the content of the email, the specific facts about your use and your business and things like that. If you want to talk about the legal standards, then you can argue that at the end. So at the end, both of you will have the ability to, both you and the county will have the ability to stand up and argue the law, which is either the county met the standards within the ordinance or did not, and you can argue that position. So in regards to more of a factual showing, I think that's really the basis of his objection that, that he has. So if you have more, more facts about the NOVs or the, your business, that's, that's where you need to kind of redirect to.
Well, I guess that my fact would be that my vehicles do not look like rental vehicles. They're parked in only my driveway and I am not required to have a license to share my vehicles from anybody. I'm not required to have a license from Kiratuck County. I'm not required to have a license from the DMV. So because of that, I cannot be considered a car rental agency. It would be impossible. I'm not required to have a commercial location. And if I were to take my privately owned vehicles and rent a commercial location, I would be out of compliance with the county ordinance, because I'm not legally allowed to rent my private vehicles at a commercial location. But I want to add that once my appeal was filed, the county very clearly violated my Fourth and my Fourteenth Amendment. And it is very clear to me that the ordinance states that once an appeal is filed, there shall be no further action. That's why I'm like, you know, it's funny that the county can play around with words and play up a Webster's dictionary and try to broadly define peer-to-peer car sharing as a rental, whatever, but they can't clearly define what further action is. When you file an appeal, that means all punitive action stops immediately. And the first violation is exactly the same as the second violation. Whether the county wants to say, oh, well, then we changed our minds and we realized that we should have cited her for something else, because we probably would have won. And then they want to cite me for something else, they can't do that. It's a violation of due process. I have a right to privacy to not be harassed. I have a right to have Kiratuck County not calling and pretending to be customers and trying to ask me about my Turo business. I have a right to not have people coming to my house from the county, taking photographs of my yard daily. Maybe they could do that before my appeal was filed, but once that appeal was filed, they could not do that. The law is very clear on that. Now, whether the board finds that they were in compliance with whatever they want to make up or not, a judge is going to see this first violation and the second violation as being exactly the same. So moving on, I live in my house in the off-season and conveniently, I move out of my house during the summer to rent it out. So I'm kind of waiting for Kiratuck County to come cite me for running an illegal hotel, but it's with Resort Realty, if anybody wants to know. Maybe they should cite Resort Realty for running all these illegal hotels.
So you need to stick to things that are relevant to this violation.
Okay. So after my appeal, I was then cited again for the same thing. I was advised by my attorney, who's a Washington DC zoning attorney, who works for the government, that I needed to ignore that second appeal, that my rights were immediately violated by that violation. I was then referred to two attorneys in Raleigh, who are taking my case now to federal court. I find this to be very serious. I don't think Kiratuck County thinks it's very serious, but it is. Then, when I moved out of my property, I did let Kiratuck County know that we had moved out. My attorney advised me that once I moved out of the residence, it abated any actions or it abated the violation. I still wanted to come here today to speak, because if Kiratuck County thinks that they can do this to me, they can do it to anybody and they will continue to do it to anybody. Can they cite my friend who delivers groceries from Food Lion?
This, this is not testimony relevant to the matter before the board.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with you, Mr. McCree. You know, this is a very narrow discussion here and I think we're getting off into all kinds of areas that are, you know, maybe they are important, but they're not relevant to this situation. The second notice of violation, I understand you're upset about that. That's not relevant here, because you, we're not appealing that. So this board is only here to hear the appeal of the first notice of violation and that's it. And we can only follow those appeal review standards that are up there on that screen and that's it. And the only thing that we can use to make that determination is evidence and testimony presented to us tonight. So, you know, anything else that doesn't, is not entered into evidence or does not consist of sworn testimony, we can't really consider that in our decision. So I, I understand your, your concern and I understand that, you know, you're upset about some things and, and it may be rightfully so, but a lot of that, this is not the place for that. So, you know, I would, I would...
Okay. Well, I'll continue then with, with...
I'd like you to, to stay within the confines of the appeal at hand.
So then Kiratuck County sent me another love letter and it says, county staff inspected your property, 1086 Hampton Street, Corolla. Today, June 7th, it appears you are no longer storing the Jeeps on this property. Now, tell me if I'm wrong, but the violation was that I was running a car rental agency. The violation wasn't that I was storing Jeeps on my property. So it's a little bit strange.
That's the second notice of violation, right?
No, the second violation is that I was operating a home business, which...
He's referring to the letter that staff sent prior to the second violation, asking for verification to, or trying to determine if they came into compliance.
Right, 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 okay.
I sent a picture of this letter to my attorney. And he told me...
Without getting into what your attorney told you and what legal ramifications he says relates to this letter, you received this letter, tell the board what facts within this letter you disagree with, not because this letter is not the basis of the violation that we're here for tonight. So share your thoughts about this letter with the board. It's in evidence, but we're not here about what your attorney told you the impact of this letter was, was not, maybe, and that you may litigate over in the future.
Okay. Well, I have no legal obligation to provide the staff the location of where my vehicles are being stored. It says, you may finalize your compliance with Kiratuck County Unified Development Ordinance by one or more of the following. Provide staff the location of where the vehicles are being stored. If the location is in Kiratuck County, the property will need to meet the requirements of the Kiratuck County UDO. Contact staff with evidence of termination of the business from Kiratuck County and/or an application for a special use permit if the business is being conducted from a commercial location within the county. I'm then under no legal obligation to do any of those things. The only thing I had to do to come into compliance was to stop running a car rental business for my property. Is that correct? We can all agree that that's what the violation was and that's what it said I needed to do in the notice of violation in order to come into compliance. It didn't say on the notice of violation, it says, compliance request, terminate automotive rentals from 1086 Hampton Street. It didn't say, then provide staff the location of where the vehicles are being stored. If the location is in Kiratuck County, the property will need to meet the requirements Kiratuck County UDO. Didn't say that in the violation. It also didn't say that I had to contact staff with evidence of termination of the business from Kiratuck County, none of that. I don't have to tell anybody... I don't have to tell anybody where I park my private vehicles. And I especially am not, I do not fall under this ridiculous letter written by Amy Wiggins. She is absolutely incorrect and inaccurate. She said that, "Previously, you were notified of vehicles in the trailer that you are parking in common areas that are not permitted. The only vehicles permitted in the common areas are the personal vehicles of owners or residents." I'm here to state today that I own a property in Monterey Shores. And I have full rights to that overflow parking lot. I have already spoken to Monterey Shores, and they have told me that I could park them and get a weekly pass. I have come into compliance with that. I don't know who Amy is, and I do not know who she sent this letter to, or how you guys got this, but this is completely ridiculous. It says, "The Declaration of Protective Covenants states in part, 'There shall be no outside storage or parking upon any lot or within any portion of the common areas of any mobile home, trailer, motor, home, tractor, truck, other than pickup trucks, commercial vehicles of any type, camper, motorized camper, trailer, boat, or other watercraft, boat, trailer, motorcycle, motorized vehicles, motorized go-kart, any other related forms of transportation devices.'" I don't have any of those parked in that lot. I only have privately owned Jeeps that I use for my personal use. If Monterey Shores had a problem with it, and they felt like they were legally allowed to do it, and they weren't going to get sued, they would have already towed my Jeeps at that lot. But they can't, because I own a house in Monterey Shores. But it doesn't matter. I can park my Jeeps at Food Lion if I wanted to. Because that is completely irrelevant to the violation. The violation only said that I had to stop running a car rental business from 1086 Hampton. A car rental business that I was never running to begin with. All I'm doing is sharing my Jeeps for a fee with other community members. By doing this, it does a lot of things. It reduces the carbon footprint. Not everybody can afford to buy a Jeep. Some people can only afford to buy a regular car, or they only own a regular car. I'm providing an opportunity for other people, other community members, to take a Jeep, or to use a Jeep, and go have a new experience. There's a lot of legislation that's behind me in my peer-sharing business. States are passing laws very quickly.
So I'm going to redirect you again. You're arguing about things that are not relevant to this violation. So if you have a law within North Carolina, you've presented those that are relevant, that you think that the county misinterpreted their ordinance, or they shouldn't have used the definition that they did, which you've shared that with us. If you have something like that, you're not, you cannot argue policy from other states, or the lobbying lobbyists from Turo. None of that is relevant to this violation. Now, they may be relevant later in some other litigation you have, but before this board tonight, we are only focused on this violation, the interpretation and the violation asserted by the county. So if you have a law that is in direct conflict to their interpretation, then you can argue that.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
No, she's presenting her case, and she's testifying right now.
Okay, well, I'm with her. Can I say something?
No, you have to wait your turn. She's, she's the witness right now. So when she's done, and she calls you as a witness, then you can say something.
So I guess I've said pretty much everything that I can possibly think of to say. The most important points I want to make is that North Carolina protects me. They define what I'm doing in that handout. There is a definition for what I'm doing. There is no license requirements from the state or the county for me to share my privately owned vehicles. It doesn't matter where I do it. I could do it at a, at the neighbor's house. I can do it at my friend's house. I can do it at my house. It's not a car rental agency. The law is very clear on that. They're very clear, the North Carolina General Statute is very clear that a peer-to-peer car sharing exists, and that it defines it. I cannot be called a car rental agency. I do not fall under any of the classifications of a car rental agency. Currituck County very clearly made a mistake when they violated me. And they cited me for running a car rental agency. And then they attempted to cite me again.
Okay, so we're going back over the same information. So I'm going to redirect you. I understand, based on the statute you introduced, you feel like you fall under that statute, and the county's interpretation is wrong, and you disagree with their analysis.
Absolutely.
Do you have anything new and additional to add to everything you said?
I don't have anything to add, except that the county better hurry up and regulate it. Because I will continue to buy properties in Corolla, and I will continue to buy Jeeps privately, until I have 20 Jeeps.
Okay. At this point, does the board want to ask questions? Do the board have any questions?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of questions.
Okay.
And after the board questions, Mr. McCree? Or do you want Mr. McCree to go first?
Yeah, I think we'd like to have Mr. McCree go first, and then the board will, he may ask some of the questions that we're thinking about asking. Mr. McCree?
So these Jeeps or vehicles are your possession? You don't know?
That's correct.
And when someone wants to use one, they pay you. You can use it for a period of time, is that correct?
That is correct.
So you are renting a motor vehicle to those persons for their use during a period of time?
Well, peer-to-peer ride sharing could be classified or defined as renting, absolutely.
So you rent motor vehicles or automobiles?
Yes.
All right. Questions from the board for Ms. Young?
We've seen pictures of your parking lot in your yard. Are you telling the board that no, none of your customers ever come to your house to pick up those Jeeps?
I am not saying that. I am saying that before this all happened, before I was under the heat of the county, we did in fact have people come to pick up the Jeeps at our property. And that was within our rights. We have absolutely every right to have people come to our property and do that. There's nothing wrong with that. But to get the eyes off of me, we just changed the way we did it. Anybody would.
Mr. Cradick?
Hey, Ms. Young, how are you?
Great, how are you?
I have just a couple of questions. Here's a real simple one. On the county's exhibits that they showed, where they took pictures initially for that first violation, do you agree that all of the vehicles that were pictured are your personal vehicles?
Yes. I have nine vehicles.
Pardon me?
I have nine vehicles.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Of the vehicles that you have, are they all parked on your driveway, your concrete?
Yes. They're all, well, that's an interesting question, because my HOA, Corolla Light, allows me to have as many vehicles as I have per the occupancy of my house, because we fall under vacation rental guidelines. So if you have a house that can have 12 people, or 16 people, you're allowed a certain amount of vehicles per that house. And my vehicles are on my driveway. And then I have a little bit of dirt next to one of my driveways that I do store additional vehicles on, but it's still on my property.
And all your vehicles are titled in your personal name?
That is correct.
So you say you have nine vehicles total?
Yes, that is correct.
And the five vehicles that are on your Turo profile, well, first I want to ask you, the photos, the screenshots entered by the county of your Turo profile, are you agreeing that that is you, that is your profile?
Yes, that is me.
Okay. The five vehicles that you have in the most recent screenshot, how many vehicles do you have listed there now?
I have five.
Okay, and that's the five Jeeps?
Yes.
And so you had, you said you have four other vehicles. So of the five Jeeps, how do you track or keep an accounting of who you rented to and the mileage? And do you differentiate the mileage between that accrued during your rentals and that accrued during your personal use of those vehicles? Do you have a way to differentiate that?
So, you know, that's an interesting question, because I am not required to have any sort of special insurance policy or commercial policy, because Turo provides that insurance for its hosts. And so if my vehicle is used by somebody else, and they get in an accident, Turo covers that insurance claim. It would not, it would not then be, it wouldn't fall under my personal insurance liability, so.
Right, so I'm not getting at an insurance question. I'm getting into a use question.
Okay.
So if you have these vehicles that you have, you know, by your own words, for rent, and you said you have four other vehicles, do you use the five vehicles that you have advertised on Turo, generally speaking, for personal use?
Yes.
Do you drive them around? And do you have a way to differentiate between the miles accrued by your renters and those accrued by your personal use? Do you have a way to differentiate that?
Well, I would say that the Jeeps are more often used by us than renters, because we have several things. I mean, I have, I have businesses in Virginia, and I have businesses in North Carolina. And all of the Jeeps I customized for my specific needs. We tow things a lot. We have a utility trailer. And we tow a lot of stuff. I'm not going to go into the details of that. But I also have five daughters. And the, two of them are licensed drivers. Three of them, three of them are driving, drivers. So they drive the Jeeps as well. My husband drives the Jeeps. My other vehicles are very impractical daily drivers. So I have, I love cars. My husband and I love cars. And we have a Mercedes AMG, and a Maserati GT, and another Maserati Levante. And we have a really old, but my favorite Chevy Tahoe that is really trusty. But yes, we drive the Jeeps every single day.
Okay. Let's see. And it says, on the screenshots, it says that you list the five Jeeps for right now, or at least based on the most recent screenshot, anywhere from $225 to $250 a day?
Yes, yes, that's accurate. So one of the Jeeps, our lesser expensive one, is an electric Jeep. And it's not a lifted Jeep. So we feel like it's only fair that it should be less expensive than the ones that are lifted and really have a lot of extra things on it. But $250 pretty much is the maximum we would feel comfortable charging someone. If we were to look at other people that are doing it on Turo, that would be comparable to the market in our area, the $250.
Okay. So I have two more questions for you. Let's see, where was I? Oh, so earlier in your testimony, you touched on something that kind of flew under the radar a little bit, and I wanted to see if you would touch on that again. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard you make a statement that said that you have since vacated the property at 1086 Hampton.
Yes, that's correct.
And when did you vacate that property?
We officially moved out March, wait, May 26th.
26th?
Yes. And then we resided somewhere else. We moved all of our vehicles. We did some work on the property. We put all-new furniture in the house for the rental season, and replaced some carpet with some LVP.
So you still, you still own that property?
Yes, that's correct.
You didn't move out and sell it? You just, you're just not staying there, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I wanted to clarify that you hadn't sold the property and moved away from that property, okay? And then the last question I have for you, in the, the appellate one document that you submitted for the board under the North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 20, Article 10B. So I'm very used to kind of reading these types of regulations. You know, I spent 20 years as a state environmental regulator. And in my current job, I still review state environmental regulations all the time. So all of these regulations are kind of built with some context, right? So a lot of cases, they will provide you a definitions section upfront, right? For the definitions of the terms that are used in that section of the regulations. But what you have provided here, and I appreciate you providing this definition, but there's no context for it, and where, and how it's used within the regulation that it addresses. All it is is a definition. So, you know, without, without any context, you know, do you have the rest of the regulation that references this activity?
So that's actually really interesting, because there is no, there's nothing before that, and there's nothing after it. It's literally this one section in the general statute that says definitions. There's nothing that precedes it, that talks about peer-to-peer vehicle sharing. It is a little confusing for me.
Do you know what part of the North Carolina General Statutes it is? And what it, what it-
It's under motor vehicle laws.
Refers to?
Yes.
Motor vehicle laws, okay. So, you know, motor vehicle laws, you know, while they have their place, you know, they don't necessarily have anything to do with county ordinances. You know, county ordinances are an allowable authority by the counties within the state of North Carolina. And they don't necessarily have to match up with everything within state, state law. But I just wanted to kind of get some context for this, because I have not ever seen- But I just wanted to kind of get some context for this because I have not ever seen peer-to-peer vehicle sharing programs defined anywhere, so I was just curious.
I will say it took a lot of research to find that, and there was nothing else included in that. It was, that was it. Because trust me, I would have printed the entire thing if there was.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Does anyone have any additional redirect?
I just have one question. Ms. Young, in your profile that were presented, it's the About Misty section, you know, hi, I'm a full-time resident of Corolla and goes on from there, is that something you prepare?
Yes, it is.
That's all I have.
I have one other question, Ms. Young. Besides the address at 1086 Hampton, is there also an address that you've been, did you receive mail at 1177 Duck Road Suite 41? What is that?
That is my business address in Duck.
And what is that business, please?
Is that relative to the violation?
So unfortunately, you're here testifying and he's asking you about the letter and the address and your business.
I feel like Kiratuck County has some sort of a vendetta against me, and revealing anything else associated with me, I don't want eyes all over me. I mean...
Duck is not in Kiratuck.
I know, but Kiratuck, I'm sure you guys have friends in Dare County, and I really don't need any more exposure or...
Thank you for not answering.
Okay.
A couple of additional questions?
Sure.
I'm curious about that Turo app a little bit. Would you mind explaining to us, let's say, how does Turo know when a car is rented or if it's not rented? I guess when a person wants to rent the vehicle from you, they go on and say, hey, I want the gray Jeep or I want the red Jeep. Is that kind of how it works?
Yeah, so very similar to Airbnb, and there's a calendar. So each Jeep, if you were to go on there, has its own calendar, and you would select the Jeep you wanted and check its availability. So I can block dates, like if I'm using the Jeep for myself, I can go on there and block certain dates and times off and then make my vehicle available at times that I'm not using it. And I just want to make it very clear, we are not making millions of dollars. These Jeeps are very expensive. We maybe break even, maybe. And having a vehicle on Turo offsets the cost of ownership for a lot of people. And a lot of people do Turo because they want to buy a vehicle and maybe they, they just don't have it in their budget, and so they allow other people to use it on Turo, and that helps them make their car payment. Now, we're not necessarily in that situation, but we're not making $100,000 a month. We're not, we're not any threat to any of the horse tour companies. We're just, I just like Jeeps. And we love cars, so... I mean, I don't know, it's, it's just a hobby.
I had another question pertaining to how the Turo app works also.
Okay.
When a client says, hey, I want, you know, July 1st to July 4th, and they secure that date with the red Jeep, for instance.
Yeah.
How does it work that you get paid? Do you get paid, let's say, at the time of their booking? Or do you get paid, let's say, later on after they're, they've returned the vehicle? Is that how it kind of works? Or do you get like a bi-weekly statement or how does that work?
So, we don't get any money upfront. Once they take possession of the vehicle, they begin what's called their trip. And after their trip is completed, given that there's no damages or like penalties imposed for smoking in the vehicle or excessive cleaning or anything like that, Turo then releases their payment to us into, through online direct deposit. I do get like quarterly statements of our earnings and...
So it's kind of like direct deposit perhaps?
Yeah. It's very similar to Airbnb where you get, well Airbnb releases their payment literally the day after the guest arrives. Turo releases the payment after the trip is finalized and they've given you back your vehicle.
It's kind of a neat program.
It really is. There's a lot of neat programs.
Yeah. I had another question and related to the Turo app in regards to your particular profile where it shows your Jeeps and the other things that you offer. It shows you offer actually beach chairs that people could get for 10 bucks a trip. Have you had to rent any beach chairs out?
So again, I wake up every morning thinking of ways to make money. And I, we bought a bunch of beach chairs at Sam's Club, and Turo allows you to put add-ons. So like, I don't really know what the other add-ons are, but one of them is beach gear. So if you want to provide that for someone, they can, they can check that box and they can pay $10 to have a beach chair. There was something else, but I forgot.
So it really is kind of like a business because you're providing the vehicle and what other amenities you can offer. You know, like you said, you're creative, so you're trying to find a way to fit the need of the community, right?
That's correct.
You're helping them out, so it is really like a business for sure.
Well, I would say everything's a business. My children that do chores around my house in exchange for an allowance, they could be considered running a business, you know? It's just, but they're just my Jeeps, they belong to me. I don't have, I don't have any, anything special that differentiates them and makes them commercial.
If I understood you correctly earlier, when you were talking about your insurance coverage, you were saying that's on personal policies. You don't have a commercial account for your car insurance.
Right.
So if the vehicle did get in an accident, you mentioned that Turo provides insurance. Is that for the consumer as well as the host?
So, Turo provides the host with insurance plans, and fortunately because of where we live, we're not really an area prone to a lot of car accidents. I have, they have different levels, tiers of insurance, so they have like a 90-10 plan, which would be my deductible will be $2,500 if somebody gets in an accident, but I get 90% of the earnings. And then they have like 80, 20, 70, 30, and 60-40. 60-40 plan, you're, you have a zero deductible, so if somebody wrecks your car, you don't have to pay anything. I choose the 90-10 plan because I know that if something were to happen to one of my Jeeps, it would probably be catastrophic. So we're looking at people burning the engines, catching them on fire out there on the beach by getting stuck and not knowing how to get unstuck. Or people going on the back roads and getting completely submerged in water, in puddles, anything like that. I don't see people getting in car accidents. I mean, I know it happens, but my risk is very small, so I choose to have more profit than give Turo.
So pretty much you have like a contract with Turo, hey, I'm going to provide these five Jeeps for blankety-blank per day, and they can add the add-ons if they want to?
Yes.
Pay for the insurance through them out of your account that you created with them, your contract with them, pretty much.
Kind of, yeah.
Or they debit your account or take proceeds from you to pay for the insurance per trip or something.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Just kind of like, you know, how Airbnb takes a fee and then they have like that air cover if something happens to your property or covered up to a million dollars. I mean, very similar.
All right. All righty, I think that's all of them I've got out. Thank you.
And I have one last question, you just raised something. So, so I'm just curious, and you don't, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to, but I'm just curious, being as this is, you know, it's new to us, you know, it may not be a new thing, this peer-to-peer vehicle sharing program, but, you know, certainly it's new to me. All right, so if, are there any, are there any, I'm just curious if any insurance companies address this kind of use? And, you know, if you, if you own your vehicles outright, then I think that's probably a different question than if the bank still, you know, owns the vehicles, you know, whether, you know, those kinds of insurance policies might even actually address something like this.
Yeah, so actually there's some legislation passed regarding private insurance companies and peer-to-peer vehicle sharing with Turo. I don't have that with me tonight, but I will say that some time ago, insurance companies could cancel your insurance if they found out you were ride sharing. Lobbyists with Turo, they fought for their company and passed, or won, I'm not sure how, what to call it, that insurance companies, just like health insurance companies, couldn't cancel your health insurance for like pre-existing conditions or whatever. They have fought to make it so that consumers can use their vehicle in ride sharing programs and not lose their policy. In addition to that, there are policies, personal vehicle policies that are specifically designed for people who use their vehicles for ride sharing. So the way that works is the insurance companies allow you to use your vehicle in a ride sharing app, and they restrict the miles between ride shares. So let's say you have a policy, it's less expensive than a typical car insurance policy because they know that your vehicle is insured with Turo. But the restriction on that is that in between people checking your vehicle out, you're only allowed to use it so many miles per month. So like 200 miles for personal use. And now you can get one of those policies and save a lot of money, or you can go to a regular company and we pay $900 a month for car insurance. But our insurance company cannot terminate us for participating in ride sharing, and that is why we chose our company. But we pay more for it, we pay a premium.
Any further questions from the board? All right. Yeah, I was going to ask if you have any, I know, I think your husband wanted to speak, so if you wanted to call him as a witness, you can do that.
I do, I think he wants to say a couple of things.
All right.
I'm going to go talk to him outside for just one second though. Is that okay? Just one second, like 30 seconds, can I talk to him outside?
I'm hungry now. I'm hungry now too.
I do, he said that and I was like, gosh, I could go for a shrimpito with a little bit of that bean salsa.
I like that fried oyster platter.
Dumped on top.
Plenty of cocktail sauce and hot sauce.
And can you state your name for the board?
William Aaron Young, I'm the husband of Mr. Young.
All right, and you were sworn in with the, at the beginning, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would like to, I would like to assert that the word rental in the context of ride sharing cannot be equated to the word rental as it applies to a commercial rental agency. Because a ride sharing, a ride sharing platform is not, it's not commercially licensed, and it's not regulated by the state of North Carolina as a commercial entity. It's, it would, it would be the same as you requiring an Uber driver to be, to carry a commercial license in order to do so out of his home. It's, there's no, there's no, there's no way to differentiate between the two. They're, they're the same. Ride sharing is ride sharing, whether it's somebody obtaining your vehicle for a specific amount of time or you driving that person somewhere. Ride sharing is ride sharing. It's not, and it's not, it's not commercial, and it's not, you're not required to have a, it's not a commercial business. And, you know, I feel like that everything my wife has said, everything she's said to the board today has been designed to give the board a perspective on a, on a topic that has no precedence. And the board needs to make its decision here today based on a perspective other than the county's perspective. They need to make their decision based on two perspectives, the county's and ours, the appellate's. So I think it's important that everything that she's said today, whether it's been objected to or not, has been important to frame the big picture of what, of what is being brought here today. And the fact that she has been violated, that we've been violated unnecessarily for something that should never have happened, for operating a commercial business out of our home, when in fact we were not. All we were doing is operating a ride sharing platform out of our home, which is not the same thing as operating a commercial business out of your home. If, if we're being, if we're going to be condemned today for our use of the word rental, then that's going to set a precedence where they're going to have to similarly condemn anyone operating any kind of ride sharing or even Airbnb in this county out of their residence. And that's, that's what, that's what that precedence is going to create. So they need to, they, the board needs to make a very objective decision here tonight because it's going to have broad sweeping implications. The state of North Carolina makes a black and white distinction between a commercial rental car agency and a ride sharing platform. The county needs to do that as well. That's all I have to put out, Ms. Young.
All right.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. McCree, would you like to ask Mr. Young any questions?
No questions.
All right, members of the board?
I have one question for you, Mr. Young.
Yes, sir.
How are you tonight, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with every statement that your wife has made here tonight, Ms. Young?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Perhaps one, one additional question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You just mentioned in your testimony, testimony moments ago, that you guys are not operating, you do not believe you're operating a commercial rental business, is that correct?
That's correct. We do not have a business license. That would, that would designate us as a commercial entity.
Alright. Now, here's a different question, using a little different wording. Do you agree that you are operating a peer-to-peer ride-share business?
Yes, as is anybody that operates a Turo business, or any Uber that operates out of his driveway.
Thank you.
Alright, your, your excuse, Mr. Young, thank you. Alright, at this time, I think we've heard the testimony from both sides, and at this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing and ask for comments from the public. I've got three people signed up to speak. I don't know if some of those folks were here for the Frog Allen hearing or not, but I've got Ben Stike Leather, Erica Cartwright, and David Huback. Are any of you present?
Yes.
We're all present.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna limit you to three minutes apiece, roughly.
That's fine.
Okay.
Hopefully, hopefully she'll do it for me.
Okay.
My name's David Huback, I'm an owner at 1062 Hampton Street. I live obviously several houses down from the appellant's. I'm here to, one, commend this group for its patience tonight, for listening to all the testimony. My main concern are several. First is, as the sheriff talked about, the covenants for the community, and the master plan provides for a residential area, an open space area, and a commercial area. We live on Hampton Street in the residential area of the, of the community, not a commercial area. The appellant's have been renting, and admitted by the appellant's that they're renting cars to individuals, and that they pick them cars up on their, at their property. Retired, myself, my wife, my fellow neighbors are tired of seeing Jeeps going up and down the road, being rented by people, and disturbing the traffic, disturbing the neighborhood, the speeds being violated, their cars being parked when there are too many people, they're parked in other neighbors' parking lots. The sheriff has been called several times to prevent people from, for, the appellant's to remove their cars from being parked on their neighbors' lots. It's a distraction, we don't want this type of behavior in our neighborhood, we don't want a commercial business. It's a rental, they're receiving a fee for it, you can call it anything you want, I think they're trying to play a game of semantics with respect to saying it's a ride-share, it's a car-sharing service as opposed to a rental service. They're receiving money, they're operating this out of their home. That's not what this community is designed for, it's not what the master plan provided for, and we object to it. Just a couple minor points, several of the pictures, one on page, two of the Jeeps on picture three, on page 20, are the testimony that their Jeeps have never been, or never parked at the Whalehead Club. Those two pictures of the Jeeps at the bottom of the page are pictures of Jeeps taken at the Whalehead Club. Page 23 of the packet shows the location where the Jeep is being picked up. It's right there, the little circle there on the map, that's Hampton Street. They're advertising, by Ms. Young's own words, "We're here for your rental needs," and the rental needs are right there on Hampton Street. And, the definitions provided in the statute, or in the UDO, provides automotive sales or rentals, premises on which new or used passenger automobiles, trailers, recreational vehicles, or light trucks in operating condition are displayed for rental. You've got the evidence right in front of you. They're mission that she rents vehicles, they rent vehicles on their property, they're displayed there on their property, they're picked up on their property. I think, again, the game, the game being played is semantics with, oh, this is ride-sharing, car-sharing, it doesn't pass muster. The ordinary meaning of the word rental, they're receiving money, it fits within the definition of your UDO and the, and the plot overlay, and we request that the, and we submit that they have not, that they have not met their burden of proof of overturning a reasonable action taken by the county. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Huback.
Oh, my additional, just for your information. You asked whether or not, you were given the definition section for peer-to-peer vehicles, there is a statute, you were given 20280-15 definitions, there's also another section, two other sections, one is 20280-16, which is reserved for future codification purposes, and 20-280-17, which is for airport operators. And the provisions for the airport operators, provides that airport operators can charge peer-to-peer vehicle sharing programs a reasonable fee for use of the airport facilities, require identifying decals, require the purchase and use of equipment, and designate a location where shared vehicles may stay on an airport operator's facility. So, the state has started looking at this issue, and obviously by the fact that they have reserved for future codification purposes, 280-16, they anticipate others actions probably to be taken, but as you acknowledge, what the state does on certain things doesn't necessarily intersect with what happens at the local, at the local level. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Huback.
Am I allowed to ask, ask questions?
No, this is just, this is just public, open public comment.
Okay.
So, they're, they're allowed to do that. So, who's next?
I think that we're both gonna pass on our opportunity, Mr. Huback.
Okay.
I think the testimony covered.
Okay, okay, that's fine, thank you. Alright, at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak from the audience that has not been sworn in, is not on the list. Alright, see you none, I will close the public hearing. And at this time, I'll ask for further discussion from the board.
So, they might want to have any argument, so it's closing argument, briefly. I know the hour is late, but procedurally, and we did, you did sustain objections to some of the legal content, so, I believe she would have the opportunity to go first, and then the county would go first.
Okay, that's fine. Ms. Young, would you like to present a closing argument?
This is the closing argument, this is the legal argument part, so...
So, this is where I gotta talk about my rights being violated?
Well, no, this is the part where you get to talk about the appeal review standards, and what, why you believe that what you presented meets those standards, or does not meet those standards. It still has to be relevant here, we're not talking about the other litigation you intend to pursue, we're talking about how the county made the determination of your violation, and you're within those bounds. So, you presented your, the statute, and you said the stat, you said earlier that statute is your position, is that's more appropriate, and that they're wrong. So, that's, in terms of your legal argument, this is the closing where you would, you know, kind of summarize your position.
Well, I will say that my attorney told me to really stick to my appeal and the stuff in it.
I was gonna say, and really, your conclusion was in that document you read, so you can just note that, and we can kind of note that for the record, that your summary and conclusion is set forth in that appeal document.
Yeah, so I guess in conclusion, I just wanna say that, like, like my appeal says, is that this is an overreach by the code enforcement program, that this car, car sharing is not a regulated concept. Whether it's gonna be regulated in the future is one thing, but it's currently not regulated. That there, the zoning administrator's decision via the code enforcement program was based on a standard not contained in the Curritut County zoning ordinance, nor other county ordinances. So, it says, it says car sharing is in compliance with the zoning ordinance and fosters a healthy sense of community. I can't stress that enough. We don't have people, and we did not have people riding up and down the street at all hours of the day and night. In fact, when we lived in Coral Light and on Hampton Street, we only had three Jeeps, and they were always checked out at the same time, 10:00 AM, and always brought back at the same time the next day, 10:00 AM. Where, if anything, my daughters, my loud teenage daughters are more of a disturbance to Coral Light than anything. We try to be very respectful of our neighbors, we actually have no people living in the houses next to us as full-time residents, for like five houses to the right, and about four houses to the left. There's nothing in our driveway, or nothing on any of our vehicles that identify any of our vehicles as being used on Turo. Whereas like an Uber driver has like an Uber thing, when they, they put in, on their vehicle when it's being used as an Uber. But we don't have anything. We, we try to stay as inconspicuous as possible, because we don't wanna disrupt our neighbors. We do get that running a commercial car agency would be a disruption. So, we try to minimize how we, how we affect our neighbors and the process in which we loan out our Jeeps to other people. We definitely have taken steps and measures to come up with new alternatives, so that people are no longer coming into our neighborhood. We don't want to be a disruption. We moved to Coral Light because we felt like it was a beautiful community, and even if we're not, because, because really, we are not in violation of any ordinance. But, we still want to live in harmony with our community. And so, we have relocated, we are thinking of new ideas, we offer delivery, so that means that we personally drive our Jeeps to the residents of somebody that would like to use them, and we drop them off at their vacation home, and then they use them, and then we go pick them up, pick the Jeep back up, and bring it back to wherever we'd like to keep it. I will say that I do have a storage parking area in Curritut County, that I pay monthly to now store my Jeeps at when they are not being utilized by other community members or tourists. So, I have taken a lot of measures to try to get in compliance with something that was inappropriately cited to me. But I am definitely aware of my, I am definitely aware of the presence of my Jeeps, so, I'm, I'm doing my best to try to mitigate the whole situation. I do not feel like I should be stopped, or told that I cannot do something like this. This is, America is a capitalist country, and it's a land of opportunity, and everybody has, should, and does have the right to create businesses and opportunity for their families. And the government cannot take that right away from people. And the government cannot make things up as they go along. So, to do so would be wholly un-American.
Thank you. County?
I think the evidence is clear, all the documentary evidence, the admissions from the applicant herself, themselves, is that this, whatever you wanna call it, is a, is a automobile rental operation that is occurring in a residential area in which it is not permitted. There's nothing wrong with someone having a business, but we, we operate under the rule of law, not under the rule of individuals who are gonna decide for themselves, at the expense of others and their property rights, that they're gonna do whatever they want to do, however they want to do it. And Mr. Hudek gave a very good statement and explanation of why we have ordinances, and why we look to have in particular uses in particular areas, because as he testified to you, the impact that is having upon his ability to enjoy his property and his rights in his residential area, I'm sure that he bought the place based upon the belief and understanding that he would be protected from what amounts to a commercial activity just down the street in his residential neighborhood. To equate this to the end of Airbnb, if the board should, should affirm the determination by staff or somehow impacts Uber, that's, that's just not in the same discussion. Airbnb is a use of property for residential purposes, which we allow. It doesn't have the impact on Airbnb. The Uber driver, more likely than not, could meet the home occupation standards, which this applicant is clearly unable, and has not met. So, the bottom line is, whatever you wanna call it, the staff has properly, as testified to you by Ms. Turner, utilized the directives from the Unified Development Ordinance of how we interpret ordinances, how we determine whether a use of property is permitted or not within the ordinance, followed all those standards appropriately to come to the conclusion that whether you wanna call it Turo, whether you wanna call it ride-sharing, the fact of the matter is, there is a motor vehicle, an automobile, that is allowed, given, put into the possession of another in exchange for money, in exchange for rent. And that's been clearly admitted to, and so based upon the clear evidence that's been presented tonight, we would ask that the board affirm the staff's determination. And we're all very glad to hear that the applicant now is willing to take steps to mitigate and move this operation to a place that it might be more appropriate, and more importantly, might actually be in compliance with the UDO. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, at this time, I'd like to ask for any further discussion from the board, keeping in mind that we, this board must adhere to the appeal review standards that you see above, and we, we really only have four options here to choose from. We can either make the determination that the county did not make an error, and correctly apply the standards of the ordinance, or we can make the decision that the, the county did make an error in determining whether the standard was met, or we can make a determination that the county made the decision based on a standard not contained in the ordinance, or we can determine that the county made an error in applying the standard or measuring a standard. So, those are our four options, based on the evidence and testimony that we've heard tonight. And with that, I will open up the discussion for the board. And with that, I will open up the discussion for the board.
I'd like to make some comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
After hearing all of, and seeing all of the evidence that has been provided tonight, there are some clear-cut things we know to be true. One is, it appears that the county followed the correct procedure when there are items that are not defined within the UDO to determine a definition. It appears that that actually happened correctly. The appellant's exhibit, number one, the peer-to-peer vehicle sharing, under the definitions of that, it shows that peer-to-peer vehicle sharing program is a business platform that connects shared vehicle owners with drivers to enable the sharing of vehicles for financial consideration or money. So this, this state general statute is saying that peer-to-peer vehicle sharing is a business, and people get money for providing that business.
Right.
We also heard the appellant and the husband as well admit that it was a business, and it was a ride-share business. And obviously, by the comments on Turoe and the description contained in Turoe written by the appellant's, they speak about the word renting. The renters have said, "It's a great experience, blah, blah, blah. We will rent with them again." In the beginning of the documentation that was provided by the county, of the screenshots off the Turoe website, every single one that talks about the section called "About Misty", every single one of them says, "While you are here on vacation, enjoy an epic Jeep for your rental needs." They're stating it's a rental. It's been admitted and documented by a neighbor, and admitted by the appellant's that people picked up vehicles from their home. It wasn't just at a off-site parking lot where they received those vehicles. And it's, it's my opinion that if you thought you were not doing something wrong, why would you move from an address? Why would you move the vehicles from your property if you did not think you were doing wrong? If you were doing it right, you would maintain your status as it is or as it was on the first day of the, of the notice of violation. They've mentioned, the appellant's have, that they moved, and they've done additional steps by having additional storage off-site, not at their current dwelling, although the map appears to show Monterey Shores as having a location. I think we see all of these things to be facts. And just to clarify, the second violation that was issued by the county absolutely is a different violation, although we're not talking about that here, and that's not what our decision is about.
Right.
But this, the UDO section that it states is different than the original one that we're speaking about and adjudicating tonight.
Yeah, we really just need to focus on 1708.
That's all the comments I have about what I've heard tonight.
All right. Anything further?
Nothing really.
I echo a lot of the things you said, Stephen, as well. You know, and some of the things too, in looking at the evidence and some of the things, specifically the June 7th letter from the county, that letter kind of reinforced to me as well that the county has worked to try to resolve this and come to some sort of amicable resolution, not just say, "You can't do this," but, you know, when you ask questions about where they'd be in store, to try to make sure, "Are we doing this the right way? Are we," you know, I can think of ways that you could probably do something like this legitimately, but you can't do it out of your house. And again, with all the admissions of it is a rental, with it being written more than a dozen times in the evidence presented tonight as well, from the Youngs, it's, it's pretty clear to me that it is a, a rental. But it was nice to see the county trying to make some effort to say, "Is this resolved? Do we need to do this or not?" And that's what I saw in that letter from the 7th.
And I believe the, the statements made by the county, after our board's questions to the witnesses that were offered by the county, have also stated that further action means they were not going to be fined. Having another violation that is a totally different subsection of the UDO is not a further action, that was another separate action.
Of course.
Right.
And monitoring a property, especially from a private space, is not a, not a-
But further action means, in the context of how the UDO is written, it means the county, once you file an appeal, we're not going to fine you, we're not going to charge you the $500 per day. We could do that if we wanted to, because you, if you have not corrected the situation, we have the right to do that.
But you filed an appeal.
But that's, but that's, that's suspended.
You have filed an appeal and said, "I want my voice heard."
That's the appeal, exactly.
And you get your voice here, heard tonight, and then after this meeting tonight, then that strikes that resolution.
And that, and that's exactly my point, is that the further action by the county has not commenced.
Right.
Right.
So there has been no further action by the county in reference to the initial notice of violation.
And it doesn't exclude it that if there was something else that happened at an address that required a notice of violation, that that shouldn't be written or presented. That notice of violation, if there's a different violation or a different ordinance or different things, absolutely should be presented as well. It doesn't relate maybe to if an appeal's filed on that, but it doesn't mean that that stops those kind of things.
Yep.
You know, say you start burning trash in the front yard, we, you know, I mean, you, you know, it, they're not related, and even though they may be on the same topic, they're different categories.
Yep.
I will reiterate everything that everyone else has said.
All right.
I, this is, to me, this, this is a business that's being run, and needs to be in conformity with the rules that are there. You don't, to me, I, I get the Uber, I get the Airbnb, I got peer-to-peer, I understand it, I've used some of it in the past myself, but this is, this is definitely a business. This is a, if it's one car and it's once in a while, that's fine, but this is now five vehicles and maybe even more to be put on. And where are you, where are you putting them? They need to be on concrete. Oil, we don't want any oil or any lubricants into the ground, some of them are, some of the pictures that, they're parked on the, the ground, not on the concrete. That's what your driveway is there for, so I, I agree with the county, I, I agree with With the violation that was put on it, I think it was the right thing to do. If you want to be in business, then you find out what's, what the rules are for the business that you want to run. And the county folks are, they work very well with any, with anybody that comes up and say, "Hey, I got an idea, this is what I want to do, what's the parameters that I need to stay within?" And they would have answered the questions, and they would have found out that they couldn't do it, not from the House.
In terms of, well, what our decision is tonight, the county was aware, became aware of a, of this issue, of a business being run in a residential zoning, zoned area, and they correctly dealt with it, is my opinion on it.
Yeah, well, they, they, you know, they initiated an investigation based, based on that.
Exactly, they did the investigation, and then they appealed, and then the notice of violation.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I understand that this is, it, it is, I, I will say that this is a little bit of a gray area for me. You know, there's, and whenever something is not explicitly defined in a regulation, right, that doesn't mean it doesn't fall under something, you know? Because when regulations are, are promulgated and issued, you can't, the, the, the county can't account for every single possible situation that may occur, whether present or in the future. And because of that, they have to be able to put it in a category that most closely relates to it. Now, I, I will say that to me, it's a gray area because, you know, you're talking about personal vehicles, personally registered to the appellant's, it's their personal vehicles, and, you know, in most cases, you can do what you want with your personal vehicle. However, you know, where I, where I'm a little bothered by what's going on here is, you know, according to Ms. Young's testimony, the, the number of vehicles has steadily increased, and Ms. Young testified that she's going to buy more vehicles and she might get 20. Now, I don't know whether she was being facetious when she said that or not, but, you know, once you start talking that way, now you're talking more of a, of a business, of a, you know, it's not just sharing my personal vehicle with someone else, one or two vehicles with someone else, this is an enterprise, and then it becomes a business, and now the county has to figure out a way, where does this fit into our existing Unified Development Ordinance? And I think the county, you know, made the proper determination that, that this falls under automobile sales and rentals, because without a definition, an explicit definition, we have to fall back on the Webster definition, right? And everyone in here has used the term rental all night long, you know, on both sides, everyone has said rental. So we're renting vehicles for profit, which-
For residence.
Yeah.
It's a vehicle, it's automotive, it's automotive rental.
It's automotive, and, you know, I, I think, I think the county has met their, their burden here in, in making their determination. So with, with that said, is there any, any further discussion from the board, and if anyone is ready to make a motion?
I can make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
In regards to BOA 22-01, Misty Young, appeal. In regards to notice of violation 1708, I believe the decision-maker did not make an error and correctly applied the standards of this ordinance in making the decision of the notice of violation or its interpretation.
I second that.
All right, we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any announcements? None, hear none? All right, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right.
And I'll second that one, too.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.